Good afternoon. I call this August 25th meeting of the Albemarle County School Board to order. We will stand and have the Pledge of Allegiance. I will now entertain a motion to approve our agenda for tonight.
Do we want to introduce ourselves?
I move we approve the agenda for tonight.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Mr. Alcaro that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We now need a motion to approve our consent agenda for tonight.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved by Dr. Acuff, second by Ms. Lee that we approve the consent agenda. Discussion on the motion? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
And even though it's already indirectly occurred, to introduce the members of our board. Dr. Acuff?
I'm Kate Acuff, representing the Jack Jewett District.
Mr. John O. Alcaro.
John O. Alcaro at large.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Mr. Dave Oberg.
Dave Oberg, Whitehall.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
I'm Graham Page, Samuel Muller District.
And our student rep, Ms. Onda Amon.
Onda Amon, student representative.
Thank you, and we are so pleased to have you, even though you were here last time and I wasn't, but really nice to have you tonight. Moving to our next agenda item announcements, are there any announcements by board members?
I guess I'll just say it since I know you're also curious. I'm Katrina Carlson, Rio District. Graham, you missed me.
Oh.
I know I came late, but I'm here.
Right, okay, I'm so sorry.
Katrina.
Grams, nothing meant.
Grams, I've been planning to do that for a long time.
Right. It was probably that I heard all of those corny jokes that Dr. Oberg, I mean, Mr. Oberg made, and sort of threw me off kilter. So sorry.
That was true.
Announcements by Dr. Haas.
So I just have one announcement. It's not really an announcement, everybody knows it, but we had our first day of school on Wednesday of this week, and I really want to congratulate especially all of our educators coming back. Several of the teachers that I talked with today when I was out and about, they said, you know, they're still working on getting their sea legs under them to get, you know, get their stamina back, but it's amazing the stamina of our educators. But I really want to say that all the hard work of our building services department really paid off. I visited on Wednesday and yesterday, I visited Mary Carr Greer, Agner Hur, Woodbrook, Hollymead, Lakeside, Journey, Mountain View, Monticello, Jackson P. Burley, Post High, Community Lab School, K-Tech, and Albemarle, and I've been very impressed with the cleanliness and the good repair of the schools inside and out. I know that maintenance teams still have some summer work to complete because they had other priorities get in the way, but the schools look and feel great. I also want to note that cafeteria staff have really come through in getting our students off to a great start with healthy breakfasts and lunches. I visited all the elementary schools as they were opening, or the ones I did visit were still having students arrive, and often students' first stop was to get a warm greeting and breakfast at the cafeteria, and I thank our staff. I was so happy to visit classrooms and observe teachers and assistants getting right down to the business of building relationships and getting to know their students, investing students in routines, and engaging students, thinking about learning goals, their goals. As I arrived at each school, I often saw the coordination and expertise of our bus drivers and transportation staff coming into play to deliver students safely and ready to go. And I thank all of our school administrators and central office staff for all of your efforts to coordinate the start of school. You did it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Do you have any other business for us tonight?
I do. I've got, we've got a few items, but the first, let's see, it would be probably good just to start out with a quick enrollment update for Ms. Schmidt.
Hi, good evening, Rosalyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. We gave a brief update at the last board meeting on enrollment. I have nothing new or significant to report since then. I had specifically mentioned Albemarle High School and Baker Butler. That does not seem to be as high as we had mentioned at that update. We will present a formal, what we call 10-day enrollment report to the board at your next business meeting. At this point in time, we are enrolled 73 more students than we have last year. So, thanks.
Ms. Schmidt, may I ask one quick question? How's our pre-K looking? Is our pre-K fully enrolled?
I will defer to Ms. Collins.
Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent, thank you for asking. I just spoke with Lisa Molinaro about 10 minutes ago, and she said we were fully enrolled except for two sites, and they had two or three more seats at each site. So we were well on our way and very much different than we were probably three weeks ago. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us which sites have spots available?
Scottsville, I believe, and Red Hill.
Thanks.
Thank you, Debbie. So I did see that Dr. Kaiser provided a very detailed update on staffing to the board with an email earlier, but Claire, did you want to come up and did you have anything to add to that or give an overview?
Good evening, everybody. Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. The email that I sent was really about teacher staffing, and so basically, we are in a much better place than we were a couple of weeks back when we reported. We started the school year with 17 vacancies, most of those in the, I should say not most, but six of those vacancies were in the area of special education. As far as the subject areas, we are basically looking for a teacher here and there in English, Spanish, math. We have two vacancies, one at Albemarle, one at Monticello High School. We are looking for three ESOL teachers, a part-time talent development resource teacher, and a elementary classroom teacher. Some of these ones that are posted now are positions that came up more recently, where additional staffing was added due to enrollment, or if we had some late resignations. We are very fortunate that while the pools are shallow, we still are getting very good candidates in the pools, and we're being able to hire them as they go into it. One of the things I especially want to note is with our special education students, we've done some realignment of case management, and so we want to make sure that our students' IEPs are being met, and right now, that is the case. Obviously, we're going to continue to hire. As far as school-based support staff goes, which was not included in my message, we are, special education seems to be the biggest vacancy area there. Across the school division, we are still in search of 15 special education teaching assistants, two regular ed teaching assistants, three nurses, which is down from two weeks ago, we were at four then, so we're slowly making progress there. We have six school-based subs that we're still looking for. That sounds high, but one of the things I would ask you to remember is that we have across our, all of our schools, our 25 schools, we have multiple, that were scaled up based on numbers, so we have more than one per school when we get into the larger schools. So we're in fairly good shape there, still hiring, though. We are in search still of an ESOL TA, two security assistants, a student support specialist, and an athletics trainer. And then, as far as our support outside of our school buildings goes, there has not been a whole lot of movement there. Obviously, transportation still continues to be a concern, searching for bus drivers. We still have 19 home-to-school routes available, and then 12 other driving positions. We do have four drivers that are currently going through training, so that's a good sign. As far as custodians go, we lost a few folks between our last visit, so we are now looking for 10 custodians. That includes float crew, full and part-time, and the lead custodians. It's the regular custodians that, the regular daily custodians where we've seen the increase there. In child nutrition, we continue to seek to hire eight food service associates. We have hired one manager in the time since we had the last board meeting. And in EDEP, we have been able to hire one person. We still have 15 vacancies across site facilitators, teachers, EDEP assistants, and special needs assistants. So that's an update from where we are. I feel like we started this school year, it sounds like a lot when you hear it, but it really is pretty comparable to where we are year over year. And the thing that I'm most optimistic about is that many of the positions are recently added positions, and so I feel like we're in good shape, and we continue to recruit and hire. And one of the things I do want to mention is, while as part of our onboarding process, it typically takes a good 10 days between the time that a person has completed all of their official paperwork and their fingerprints and that type of thing, for us to get them in systems and be able to start. And we have, through the work of our human resources department and the payroll department with the local government, we've been able to lift some of the typical processes temporarily for getting people onboard, so that as soon as we know that they are clear, we can get them onboard, even while waiting for some of the technology systems to happen. So that's a real win for us to be able to get people in faster.
A quick question, if I might. I know that we've had some, I'm wondering when the last market study we've done with respect to our nurses, we have fairly high turnover there, and I know they've worked very hard during COVID, and I know that they can get a lot more pay working in the health system.
As a reminder, we are going through the compensation study. We'll be bringing that to the board, and you'll see how the, what the market looks like, the new recommended market, as well as where not only the nurses, but many of the other positions fall there. So we'll have a detailed report on that.
And the board set aside, what is it, $3 million for this year to address areas where the board determines to be a priority?
Thank you.
So I have a comment. I was going to wait to school board business, but since we're talking about it, I did want to bring up transportation. I know that we had a, I sent an email about, all of you, to all of you about this, and I know that we just had a presentation, but I feel like I was somewhat remiss and are unfortunately overly optimistic about the situation. I think because I was using a comparison to our surrounding counties to kind of say, well, we're doing well, and we are, we're doing a good job compared to those around us. But I guess what I want to say today is it's unacceptable where it is. It's like a fundamental operational piece that's required for our schools to work well. It unfairly impacts those from low economic backgrounds. And I'm on the school board, and I didn't understand. I thought my kid was going to be riding a bus until two days before the start of school. I got an email saying there were two bus drivers for 349 kids. And that's, that's, that's basically, there's not bus driving. And so I guess I wanted to bring it up to everyone and in the public and say that to me, that needs to be a pri, that needs to be something we fix, it needs to be a priority. I don't know what we need to do. I know last year, we had said a lot of things, and it sounds like they're still kind of being worked out, and I guess in the next budget cycle, and the $3 million that we've already allotted, that to me is very important. If we, I also visited a school last year, and I think last year, we were very understanding of it being an abnormal kind of school year, we're getting back into the routine, and I was kind of thinking that this year would be a little different. Last year, I visited a middle school where the principal told me her number one concern was the fact that every single day, a busload of kids from our poorest neighborhood came an hour late to school. So to me, that's unacceptable, and I hope that we can make it a priority. I don't know what that looks like. I know we did hiring bonuses before. Hiring bonuses are tough because they, you know, the ones who have already hired, so I just, I want to make it a priority. I trust you all to figure it out. The other thing is it raised a lot of questions about what even our school day looks like. If kids are arriving an hour early or leaving late, who's watching them? What's going on? I spoke to my mom, who said that they actually had a similar problem in their county, and she was required to stay 30 minutes every day and watch the kids that were in her period. So I just had a lot of questions. And it's a big issue.
Yeah, I concur. It is something we're very concerned about, and what we've got, what we've got, what we're looking at right now is both the hiring piece of it, obviously, and I think that to your point about prioritizing, you know, as we look at how we, when we see the compensation study, I think that that, you know, the things that you all have brought up as real concerns, I think you'll, you know, that you'll be able to look at that and make some decisions that way. One of the things I also know is that the transportation department is really doing yeoman's work right now, trying to figure all of this out with what we've got.
Which is why I do, I just want to emphasize that I get that it's a hard position. We're basically making lemonade with no lemons at all. But I, something that I was kind of churning in my mind is like cafeteria workers, if we, if we came before the board and said, we actually don't have workers to feed our children, so they just won't be eating at school, but hey, we're doing better, at least we're feeding 20% of our kids, you know, Charlottesville can only feed 10%. At no point will we sit back and say, you know, like, that works for us.
Katrina, in fairness, I don't think anybody's sitting back and saying, hey, we're doing great. I, this is a problem that is not in our transportation department or our custodian department. It is a problem nationwide to hire anybody. I'm a private business owner who's in the position of trying to hire somebody, and the reality is, we're not getting applications, and it's a good job.
Yeah, so I agree. So I don't want to point blame, but what I want to say is, it needs to be a priority. If we have to cut budgets somewhere else, so that we're paying our bus drivers more than $17 as a starting salary, then that's what we need to do. If we need to make them a full-time position, even if they only have three hours, if they have three hours in the middle of the day that they're not doing stuff, that's fine. That's what we need to do to get over the hump, so that we can get our kids to school.
I don't disagree with you. I just want to make sure that we're clear that this is not a circumstance in which people are sitting, I don't believe for a minute that Dr. Kaiser is sitting back going, oh, hey, look, we're better than Charlottesville.
And my apologies if that was an implication. I was actually hesitant to even bring it up, because I, by all means, think everyone is working as hard as they can. What I want to do as a board, kind of at the top level, is I did not realize what was going on. I was thinking it was in a much better place than it was, so I guess I wanted to kind of point out that that's not been my experience. I don't think we've heard that from constituents. And two, I just want to say that personally, I would like to see it a bigger priority, even if we have to cut back other things, because the other stuff becomes fluff if the kids can't get to the building reliably and being classed.
Yeah, and very honestly, I wish I was standing up here saying, we have every position filled. I mean, that's when we, when I would be satisfied. So I'm with you, I agree that it is a problem, as are the other positions that we don't have filled. What I was going to share is, one of the things that we do over the course of the first 10 days of school, we look at, obviously, we look at enrollment, that's one of the things we think about to determine if we need to adjust staffing at the schools anywhere. But I know that they are also looking at bus ridership, and they'll be probably making some adjustments where we see some gaps and can do some realignment there to hopefully make the situation better. Again, to the point of making lemonade without lemons, hopefully, we'll be, at that point, making lemonades at least with a few lemons, so. But to your point, it's.
I think it's important also to acknowledge that our transportation, our bus drivers are frontline workers here, and they're doing a hell of a good job. I mean, I understand, so I beg, I understand the frustration, and if I was a parent in that position, I would be very upset, but I hope our parents understand, our bus drivers are doing way more than we can expect them to, and doing a damn good job at it. So I, I think, you know, we got to support them, so.
I mean, I agree with Mr. Oberg, but my concern was the notices that went out fairly late in terms of having parents. I mean, maybe, maybe I just saw the notices late, but we've had several emails saying, I just found out, and Katrina said she just found out a couple days before school starts, so that doesn't allow much planning time. But the question, in addition to figuring out how to hire more drivers, how can we mitigate the impact, which, and one of the parents said she couldn't wait for her kid to get on the bus, even if it came late because she had to be at work. So can we open the schools earlier? How can we mitigate, if a parent can bring their kid to school, their student? You know, how can we help mitigate the fact that we have understaffed transportation department? Because this is a school-wide issue, it's not just the transportation department's issue. Anyway.
I see, Rosalyn, did you?
I didn't, I feel.
You have the solution, Rosalyn?
I don't. I was just trying to say, Dr. Kaiser, as you said, it's not just a transportation issue, but as transportation is one of the departments I oversee, I just wanted to get her off the hook. I just want to acknowledge, Katrina, I hope we didn't give the impression of that update that we had it all solved last time, so I do just want to publicly acknowledge that we know it's not going well, and it's very impactful to those families that are impacted by the shortage. That being said, we are very proud of the work they were able to do, and very grateful for the staff that we have, and they really are making the best of what they have right now, so.
So one thing that we've talked about is the ridership, and so when Charmaine presented at the last board meeting, like, one of the things she showed was they were projecting 9,000 riders, and last year, they were projecting 8,000 riders, and it ended up being more like 5,000. One of the things they're going to do differently in terms of their protocol for ridership is that they're going to remove riders after 10 days of not riding the bus. The protocol in the past has been, it's been put off to the OA at the school to contact the family and say, hey, you haven't been riding the bus, and then inevitably, the family says, oh, no, keep them on the bus, we might still need to ride the bus, and then the OA at the school doesn't take them out. We're not going to do that anymore. If you're not riding the bus, the bus just simply won't show up and come down to your court and have to back up and back up and back up and come back out again. So that's one thing we really need families to do, is that if they're not riding the bus to come off, I believe that if, once we start going through that ridership change, we'll be down to closer to 6,000 riders, and with that, they'll be able to consolidate more routes. And what that will mean then is fewer double backs and less pressure on the schools that you're talking about. My experience going out to the elementary schools early on was that the double backs didn't have very many children on them. I guess part of that was because if parents knew that they were on a double back, they would just bring their child to school. So the numbers look like, you know, of riding the buses, even today, when I was at Mountain View, it does look like we can, we'll be able to cut down on the numbers of students that we think are on buses, and then we can make some impact there. One thing that Ms. White did foreshadow is that next year, we're, one of the things we're going to, and we're going to start communicating, and I asked Ms. White to work with Mr. Jeramita, start working on a communication plan, because what we need to do is, the variable right now is when are kids getting to school, right? So our schools are all starting in lockstep all across the county at the same time. The transportation department came with us with, one solution would be to alter the school's starting times. Unfortunately, it was late in the summer when that came up, and I made the decision to say, we're not, we're not going to do that, because as, if you think you're getting complaints right now, I mean, and I've seen probably six emails about this issue altogether, you would be inundated with parents from Agner Hur when we said, school's going to start at 7:30 this year, and we're letting you know in July. But we are going to look at variable start times for our schools, because the point that Ms. Carlson made is, is the point. We're in the sixth largest land area county in Virginia. We, we're, transportation's not a luxury. We're not in a, in a small town or a small city where it's just a short ride or a walk to school, so we have to prioritize, we have to shift our paradigm and say, the transportation will come first in many ways. So there will be schools starting before 8 o'clock next year. That will ripple up to middle schools, that will also impact the high schools, so you'll be having different schools around the county on different times. I don't really see that as a problem. The reason I don't see it as a problem is that, the other thing you've brought up, which is, children are arriving to school late after instruction is getting started and things are going on. I do think the schools are doing a great job of bringing them in and getting, you know, having a rolling start, but it's still impactful, and then they're there late. So we're going to have to shift to match up to the times that our buses can do. So I do want to batten down the hatches on that, because that's going to be a shift, and I am charging the transportation department and our communications department, start communicating now that that's going to be the change. Thank you for letting me speak.
Actually, Rosalyn, I, we have gotten a few messages, but, and the ones that we've gotten have, you know, obviously shown like big issues. I just want to get a sense of, like, truly the scope of the issue right now, and I know, Dr. Haas, you said that it's going to change as, you know, people roll off and there are fewer drivebacks or whatever. So, and I had, I had heard that the Southwood kids had gotten back at like So, and I had, I had heard that the Southwood kids had gotten back at like 6:30. I just want to get a sense of like what truly we are looking at right now, what the situation has been.
Do you, do you think you could put together like a report for the board?
We would like, it is complicated, right? And so I, I want to answer right on the spot. So we're going to, we'll prepare a brief exactly how many doublebacks we're doing, where they're at, who's being impacted, and we will provide that.
On, piggybacking off of that, as a concrete thing out of this conversation, can we include in our consent agenda until, are, at some interval agreeable to the board, like, an update, so that we can just check in and know, like, here's what's going on, like, with the dashboard that we have, and then we, we can keep an eye on it?
Yeah.
Can I see clarity of what types of information you would like on that report? Open routes?
Hiring update, for, for me, I'd like open spots, pipeline, like, when do we anticipate or what's going to happen? Anything? I, I don't know what other information you have. Do you, do you-
I would say length of route.
Yeah.
I do have some of that.
Yeah, I was thinking too, from what you had said, Ms. Lee, that it would be like, you know, when's the earliest buses arriving? When are the, the last? Because we have, I mean, we have that data, so it would be good for the board.
And where those neighborhoods are. And I, I just want to see, you know, as you said, Ms. Carlson, the most affected neighborhoods are often, or parents, families are lower income. So I would like to know where the biggest effects are happening.
Bus drive times? We've got a few emails. Now, I don't want, if this is going to take a lot of work, and that's what, I don't know what you can easily pull up and say, like, here's our longest route. And that might not need to be like a week, or a bi-weekly or monthly update, but I, we have heard, and have heard from a lot of people, that they have very long bus rides and are they're having to be picked up incredibly early from their actual school start time.
So if I could make a proposal, that is somewhat more static, so we can provide an update on that.
Just one time, yeah.
And then the other ones would be the things that are changing. We'll take a stab at it. If that's the right information, you can let us know. If you want additional information, let us know.
Just the variability in ridership, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Another item for the board, I would, first, I would like to thank Vernon Leckey for reaching out to me earlier this week to raise a concern about the ACPS COVID leave benefit expiring on July 1st, 2022. I recommend that the school board reinstate 10 days of COVID leave per employee. So that's part of, of my recommendation. In addition, I recommend that each new employee hired be granted 10 days of COVID leave. During the fourth quarter of this school year, we will look at our usage data with our Employee Voice Committee and revisit whether we will extend COVID leave beyond June 30th, 2023. And unlike this last round, we'll remain flexible and keep an eye on our, on our case counts and hospital beds and other issues, and be, be more flexible about changing it back if we need to as we approach the school year. So my recommendation is 10 days of COVID leave per employee. And then also, the second part of that is when new employees are hired, to grant them 10 days.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. And just to have it on the record, I would like a motion on Dr. Haas's recommendation.
I move that we grant 10 days of COVID leave to every employee, and 10 days of COVID leave to every new employee to be used when necessary when they test positive.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ober, second by Mr. Alcaro. Yeah, we grant 10 days, 10 days of COVID leave to all of our employees, and 10 days also to all of our new employees. Any discussion on the motion?
As somebody who's had COVID twice, my only concern is, 10 days may not do it. And what do we, I, I, I think we might want to grant the superintendent the ability to give additional days, because, I mean, I, I was sick for three weeks, and I'm still not better. I mean, the reality is, I'm still not where I could be. And so what I don't want to do is have, have a teacher who's out for 10 days and all of a sudden has to go back and just really shouldn't be, because then we're, it, it's not a matter of infecting anybody else, we're putting somebody's life in danger. So I'd like to, and I understand that we can't just blanketly tell everybody, oh, you can have as much time as you want, but I'd sure like to give the superintendent's office the authority to grant additional leave on a case-by-case basis.
Your original motion was to have 10 days and 10.
I, I think it needs to be a separate motion. I think we should discuss the second one.
So maybe a separate motion. So first, on the motion of 10 days for our employees and 10 days for new. Ms. Johnston, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. and Carrie?
Okay, Mr. Ober.
Mr. Mr. Page, I'd, I'd like to ask staff to come back with a suggestion on how we can structure that.
Okay.
Okay, I just, I think there needs to be some mechanism that, because we know, I mean, it's going to be, this is going to be an issue. People are going to have long-term COVID, and I think we had, have to have some sort of mechanism in place in anticipation of that. So I'd like staff to come back, if they could, with a recommendation on what we can do.
So, Dr. Haas, you've made a note of that. All right, thank you. We are now ready for a public comment with our vice chair, Ms. Carlson.
I am going to start by reading the public comment guidelines. And Ms. Johnston, there, everyone's in person, right?
Correct.
Okay. The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in matters relevant to school board governance, and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Alamo County residents and community members. Before public comment starts, I'm going to announce the order in which the speakers will comment. There are only four, so I'll just list them all. Each speaker's access to public comment is three minutes. You'll be notified when you reach the two, you'll be notified when you have one minute left. It's green when you have three, yellow when you have one, and red when your time is up. Speakers during the meeting or those submitting written comments should state their name and address or magisterial district. Further, speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or the operations of the school division. So with that, we have Sarah Harris, followed by Caden Wright, and then Marcella Brightson and Vernon Leckey. So Ms. Harris, if you are ready.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Actually, no, not that well, if you could turn, I just automatically said that. I can hear you, but probably not everyone can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Harris. I'm a parent of three ACPS students in the Whitehall District. And I know there are a lot of priorities that you guys are juggling right now, but I'm here to talk about period care. In 2020, the Virginia General Assembly passed a bill requiring menstrual care products to be freely available to students in grades five through 12 at their schools. Funding for menstrual products had previously existed in Virginia public schools, but products were typically kept in nurses' offices, requiring kids to make a special stop and a request to get the products that they needed. The new bill requires that public schools provide free menstrual products in school bathrooms, in the hopes of reducing missed school time and de-stigmatizing this normal bodily function. Reports from kids in ACPS middle schools suggest that while there are dispensers in some of the school bathrooms, they're often or always empty. And while high school dispensers are, for the most part, stocked, the products provided by the schools are often not the products that most kids feel most comfortable using. Period care products are expensive, and we don't want menstruation to be a barrier to school attendance, so these supplies need to be accessible. Period care is also personal, so we need a wide variety of products available. If choice and comfort is important in seating, it's even more important in personal hygiene. When I called around to the different schools, nearly every school reported a need for menstrual care products. I launched a fundraiser, and in less than three days, raised over $1,100 to purchase supplies. Thanks to the generosity of this community, I collected enough money to provide multiple brands and varieties of pads and tampons, including some teen-sized products that were specifically requested, to every school that expresses a need for them, elementary through high school. Clearly, this effort struck a chord with folks, and while I was happy to do it, it's really the responsibility of the school division to provide these products for students. It sounds like the bare minimum of care products are provided for some high school students, but it would be even better for our kids if a wide variety of period care products were freely accessible to all students, available in bathrooms in every school. In the future, maybe we could even offer some sustainable options, such as Diva cups or period underwear to students who request them. So thank you for all that you do on every matter related to students and schools, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Harris. The next speaker is Mr. Wright.
Good evening. I'm Caden Wright, and I'm a student at Alamo High School and Montel High School. Every day, I ride bus 155 to school, but since around mid-year last year, my bus has been anywhere from 30 minutes to two hours late. Now, I'm lucky enough to have parents with schedules that can accommodate unstable transportation patterns, but this isn't the case for everyone. Some parents don't have the luxury of being late to work because they had to watch their children wait to board a late bus. Other parents don't have money for gas to bring their children to school every day, and some parents live too far away from a school to make their children walk to school. What transportation problems has done is create a socioeconomic barrier to education. Wealthier parents can afford to send their children to school on time and in a safe manner, while lower-income families cannot. When employees' needs aren't met, your employees will be dissatisfied. The more dissatisfied your employees are, the more your employees will leave or retire early. When the division has a shortage in employees, specifically bus drivers, buses arrive late at routes. When students are late at school, they are less likely to succeed in their education. And when students don't succeed in their education, they're more likely to get lower-paying jobs and live on food stamps or government welfare, putting them in unstable and unreliable conditions. This makes school transportation an equity issue, not a logistical inconvenience. Your failure to keep employees happy is negatively affecting students in ways that will follow us for the rest of our lives. A few months ago, you were presented with a method, collective bargaining, to help satisfy your employees. You were presented a way that employees could communicate with you and present alternatives to unsatisfactory working conditions. You declined. You failed to see what could happen if employee morale dipped lower, and you failed to use the information presented to you to improve the system. But even now, you're being presented with an opportunity to improve, to communicate, and to grow. If you don't take this opportunity, you won't just be condemning teachers to this mess. No, you'll be producing under-repaired and frankly incompetent students. No action is without consequences, and if you can't comprehend the consequences of your decisions, then you should not be in a position where, where you can make them. Now, your buses have already wasted enough of my time, so I'm going to go.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Wright. The next speaker will be Ms. Brightson.
Hello. To an extent, this is a little bit of a moot point, because you've kind of already voted on it, but I think a lot of the sentiments remain important. So my name is Marcella Brightson, and I'm a resident of the Scottsville District. On Friday, August 18th, I received a county email about COVID mitigation strategies in our schools. And I thought, oh, good, I'm glad they still care about this. And then on Sunday, August 21st, I was informed that Alamo HR COVID allowed COVID leave to expire quietly for employees. Every school board meeting, I hear you all asking about hiring, talking about perks, and why this is a county that people want to work in. But then, at the same time, allowing things like COVID leave to expire and taking away COVID precautions for these very people you are working so hard to hire are confusing. I didn't receive a county email. I checked around, none of us did. But I did receive an email from our local AEA, and that feeling made me feel sick. I texted all my friends and stakeholders in the county and asked them to email their school board members, and one friend replied, saying, huh. I mean, even if I emailed them, it seems like they've been really resistant to anything good for us lately. And I responded, if enough non-teacher stakeholders complain, then hopefully, they won't be able to keep ignoring us. What a bleak conversation to be having. What a sobering reality that not only is the pandemic not over, but we are still fighting to be seen as valid and deserving of safety. I've received many thank yous from employees since I started speaking at these meetings, but it seems crappy I'm being praised for standing here telling you guys things you already know. You know that putting students first means you also have to think about all of the educators they work with. If you take away unpaid COVID sick leave, amongst other things, it means that people are less likely to test, because they just don't want to know. It means that more people will come to school sick, because they can't afford to take off unpaid time. It means that underpaid and understaffed areas in ACPS are going to be hit even harder than they already are by both sickness and absence. And you might say to me, Marcella, everyone can use the sick bank. It'll all be okay. But that is not true. To use sick bank, it requires we have first used up all of our own sick leave. And then we must be also okay with having to reach up to 20 unpaid sick days before we even have access to this bank. And the cherry on top of all of that is that we must first have had the foresight to apply for the sick bank leave in advance. I remember before I even understood how badly I wanted to be a teacher, I would see these stories on Facebook and TV. Taco Bell allows local child to use their Wi-Fi for homework. Or, honestly, the most relevant, sick teacher blessed by coworkers as they pool all their sick time to colleague fighting illness. And I would look at them and think how messed up that was. These counties obviously don't care about their staff or students. And then I blinked, and I was the teacher, and I don't want to belong to one of these counties, where some person is shaking their head, reading the headlines, county takes away COVID sick leave for staff. Do you? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Brightson. And our last speaker, Mr. Leckey.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Leckey, and I'm president of the Alamo Education Association. Speech has changed a little bit, so I'll just talk on that. I appreciate you all voting to approve 10 days of COVID leave for us this year. The policy from last year, which expired on June 30th, gave Alamo County public school workers 10 days of COVID leave if they needed it due to contracting COVID. I'm glad that you voted to approve to give COVID leave for such a circumstance. I also ask that you offer that as well if they are the caretaker of a relative, such as a child, that also has COVID. I also know a few ACPS workers that have had to take off due to contracting COVID over the last few weeks, and some even in July as well. So I also ask that the COVID leave be applied retroactively, so that kind of covers the time that they were forced to take off, either using their personal leave or not getting paid for those days. And there's more I can say too, but I will be happy to tell you that at another meeting. Thank you so much.
Mr. Speaker, I'd like to amend my prior motion and ask that it be made retroactive to July. Mr. Leckey, what was the date?
June 30th.
To, to June, July 1st.
I would agree with that, because I got COVID when my workplace had a 10-day leave, and it was nice. And then my colleagues got it just a few months later, when it was expired, and they didn't use all their sick leave, which did not fill fear.
Second my motion.
Yeah, second. Well, do we even need a motion, or if that's-
I didn't hear your motion.
Yeah, say it again.
I move that we, we amend my prior motion granting 10 days of sick leave.
Well, that motion has already passed, so I guess just a new motion would be best.
I move that, I move that we grant the 10-day leave of, of COVID leave retroactive to anyone who missed time as a result of COVID between the year, between the months of July 1st and today.
I second, and then I would ask Mr. Dr. Haas if that's okay.
It's been moved by Mr. Ober, second by Ms. Carlson, that we grant 10 days retroactive to anyone who has missed COVID between July 31st, I think you said, and today.
July 1st.
July 1st and today. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston, please call the roll.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Leckey. Good call.
Okay, and thank you, Mr. Ober, for your motion.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. We will now move to the first part of our division work session for tonight, middle school advisory. And this will be introduced by Ms. Collins and Mr. Thomas.
Good evening, I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent. We have two items this evening for our work session. The first one is our middle school advisory. This is a new curriculum for us, and as such, we're bringing it to you for review and approval. Well, the first time you'll see it is tonight, and then we'll have 30 days and bring it back for approval. So that's how this will work. So that's the first part. We anticipate that to be about 30 minutes. The second part and the bulk of our work session tonight will be on our mental health supports. So we look forward to having conversations with you about both items, and I'm going to turn it over at this point to Mr. Jay Thomas, who is our Executive Director of Secondary Education.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins. Good evening, board members. I'm excited to be here this evening, along with some of my colleagues, Cassandra Blunt, who's a principal at Burley Middle School, and a number of principals who are in the stands, the auditorium here, along with some of our folks from the Office of Instruction and Department of Technology to present about our middle school advisory. So before we hit the middle school advisory part, just wanted to tie it into what you're going to be hearing from tonight is laid through the values, the mission, the vision, and the goals of Almaral County. And I think you'll see very clearly the pieces around engaging all students and learners with appropriate and relevant learning experiences. You'll also see the eight portraits of a learner weave through the conversations today around digital citizenship and in our advisory lessons, as well as our pathway exploration. So first, the evolution of our advisory. Several years ago, the schools were individually piloting some lessons back in their school. They were using the frameworks through developmental design, which we've had in our middle school for several years. And we've also, at the same time, for about five years, been talking with the middle school principals about some common middle school experiences that are guaranteed viable experiences regardless of what middle school you're in throughout the division. Some of the big ideas that we had been working on too are around career awareness, digital citizenship, and they had been a part of developmental designs or advisory meetings for several years as well. With the constructive feedback we got after lessons that they piloted and some positive feedback, as well as the constructive feedback, what we did last year is spent the year... I'll put a timeline up here. We spent the last year, the entire year, partnering with UVA, partnering with our teachers in our school, and really taking a look at our lessons that we had and what that guaranteed middle school curriculum would look like as we kind of moved forward. So you can see, we spent the year getting the framework and understanding of what we wanted those lessons to look like, put together. And then we had the opportunity to work in partnership with UVA to start developing the lessons, as the teachers took them back to get feedback, bring them back, keep tweaking them, and we finished those this summer, and we're excited to be able to put those in front of you today. So to talk a little bit about some of the partnerships and the work we're doing, I've asked Cassandra Blunt to share the next couple of slides.
Good evening, board members. Cassandra Blunt, very proud principal of Jackson P. Burley Middle School. Thank you all for allowing us to share our excitement and the possibility of having a common middle school advisory curriculum. The middle school advisory development team consisted of teams of teachers, counselors, and TDRTs who partnered with our ACPS lead coaches, UVA professors, and our learning technology team to represent diverse perspectives and interests in building out a weekly common curricular experience for our middle school students. The development team held a series of meetings with our partners that resulted in the proposed advisory curriculum for implementation each Wednesday in all county middle schools. Middle school principals also held meetings in late spring and early summer with our families and our staffs to gather input after the development team created the structure and the lessons. So the overarching purpose of our common middle school advisory curriculum is to cultivate within all of our students a heightened sense of awareness, affirmation, and agency. Through these elements, the purpose of this curriculum is to support the growth and development of the whole child by building our students' capacity to be collaborative, thoughtful, caring, and successful contributors to their communities, beginning with their school communities. So in order to fulfill the stated purpose for the middle school advisory curriculum, we've identified specific goals that target the development of our middle school students that are aligned with our division's vision, mission, and priorities. Among those, each student will develop a trusting relationship with at least one adult who will be that student's advocate, increasing students' sense of belonging among their peers and within the school community, having opportunities for them to examine their developing identities and finding their voice. And ultimately, what we want is for our middle school students to have the space they need to safely grow and develop, and ultimately enjoy their learning journey.
So a brief overview of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and how we've interweaved the digital citizenship pathway exploration in our advisory work. You'll see here just a general overview that will comprise of seven lessons of digital citizenship at eighth grade level. They'll be progressive on top of each other, the pathway exploration of 10, and the advisory lessons of 18. Sixth grade really starts with understanding self and other students in class. Seventh grade focuses on understanding others and relating self to others. And eighth grade really is all about students understanding who they are in the context of their broader communities. The curriculum starts inward and expands outward. At the same time, students will always study larger historical and community contexts because they are very much part of these contexts. Throughout the whole progression, students will gain awareness about who they are and exercise agency to positively impact their communities. Now, we're going to go through each of those three areas, and so at first, we'd like to call up Clay Todd, who'll talk about the digital citizenship.
Thank you, Jay. Good evening. I'm Clay Todd. I currently serve as the Assistant Director for Technology Integration for our School Division, directing our Learning Technology Integrator Team. Tonight, I have the privilege of sharing with you about the digital citizenship portion of our middle school advisory curriculum. We define digital citizenship as the safe, responsible, ethical, and mindful behavior of technology use, especially when in a community. With technology, social media, and the pace of information in today's world, we wanted to identify a curriculum which focuses not on just the don'ts, but also the do's of healthy and responsible technology use. After all, technology is and will continue to be intimately woven into the everyday life of our students in and out of school. It is natural that the bulk of our curriculum is made up of lessons drafted by Common Sense Media. Common Sense Media is an organization that serves as the world's leading nonprofit aimed at healthy technology use and mindful media consumption. The curriculum is organized across six domains. There we go. Across six domains, each are focused on an essential area of digital citizenship. The first is media balance and well-being. How am I being mindful about what and how much technology I am using? Privacy and security, how am I protecting myself while online? Digital footprint and identity, what follows me online? And how am I representing myself positively in digital spaces? Relationships and communication, how am I communicating safely and kindly online? Cyberbullying, digital drama, and hate speech, how am I responding to unkind behavior online? And finally, news and media literacy, how do I sort out fact from fiction, and how do I find credible information online? Each of these domains ties easily back to our strategic goal of thriving students. Indeed, our students should not only thrive in face-to-face interaction, but in their digital interactions as well. Furthermore, supplemental materials to our curriculum support our division's mission to build relationships with families. As part of this curriculum launch, we are also currently printing copies of our revised Family Field Guide for Digital Citizenship in both English and Spanish. This publication, To Go Home with Every Child, is filled with conversation starters and resources for healthy technology use at home, as aligned with the same domains in our digital citizenship curriculum. Thank you for your time, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Megan Maynard, our Lead Coach for Career and Technical Education, and she'll share more with you about the next portion of our curriculum.
Thank you, Clay. Good evening, I'm Megan Maynard, Lead Coach for Current Technical Education, and I'll be sharing with you a little bit about the pathway exploration lessons in our middle school advisory program. These lessons align with the middle school counseling standards and incorporate the career investigations competencies from the Virginia Department of Education. The learning goals of the pathway exploration lessons focus on student learning, students learning more about themselves and their individual assets, strengths, skills, and interests. Students will have multiple opportunities to engage in the iterative cycle of discovery and self-reflection as they explore college and career pathways. They'll consider how they personally align with their strengths and passions throughout their exploration experience. Students will learn about goal setting as a process to help them achieve the goals they imagine for themselves. They will also be encouraged to see both their program of study and their lived experiences in the world around them as part of their lifelong pathway exploration journey. The pathway exploration lessons are chunked into three sections. Students will begin with a process of self-discoveries, considering their unique strengths, what they care about, and what brings them joy. From this lens, next, students will explore pathway options and opportunities. Finally, students will consider steps they might take to achieve their personal vision of success, including considerations for resiliency and wellness. Each child will collect artifacts along the way of discovery, exploration, and reflection in a portfolio which they can continue to update and adapt throughout their secondary school experience. Emphasizing our goal of thriving students and values of excellence and wellness, our middle school pathway exploration experiences provide opportunities for students to begin to actualize their dreams, to become lifelong contributors and leaders in our dynamic and diverse society. Thank you for your time, and next, we'll have Neely Minton, who will share a little bit about our identity and YPAR sections.
Good evening, members of the board. It's my pleasure to speak to you this evening about the identity and YPAR... Sorry, portions of our middle school curriculum. I gotta back up here. Just couldn't help it, went ahead. So I had the fortunate pleasure of being able to collaborate with Dr. Jahari Harris, who's an assistant professor at UVA's School of Education and Human Development throughout our team's process of professional learning and lesson design. Dr. Harris built the capacity of our teachers to learn best practices in anti-racist, anti-bias instruction, identity development, and developmental science. With that knowledge, our team was able to design lessons in alignment with these best practices. In terms of identity, our overarching goal is to recognize and affirm each and every student's identities, help students to develop positive regard for their identities, and to allow students to see each other and others in their full humanity and complexity. Our identity lessons build from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade, as you can see on this slide. So in sixth grade, students will learn about their own identities and cultures by interviewing VIPs or very important people in their lives, which is a process known as autoethnography. In seventh grade, students will learn about others' identities by exploring a series of narratives that challenge this idea that there's a single story that describes people. And in eighth grade, students will put their identity work into action by completing a full collaborative YPAR, or Youth Participatory Action Research Project, around an issue tied to identity that is both important and relevant to students' lives. In addition to gaining awareness of their own and others' identities, we seek to honor the fact that students are part of their community context, as Mr. Thomas noted before. To that end, students will explore issues of unfairness tied to identity and take action to create more just and inclusive communities and schools. This part of the curriculum likewise builds from sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade. In sixth grade, students will trace an issue of unfairness from the past to the present to the future. And this is something called Journey Box, so you may hear Dr. Harris talk about Journey Box in her video. In seventh grade, students will learn about YPAR action research skills and practice putting those skills into action in order to prepare for the full YPAR project that they'll do in eighth grade. And of course, I've mentioned this before, in eighth grade, students will complete a full YPAR project. This YPAR project allows students to choose a topic that is relevant to their lives and communities, conduct action research around that topic, and exercise agency to change their communities and schools for the better. Okay, so I've mentioned YPAR many times, I've touched on it, but what is YPAR exactly? You've probably heard different terminology to describe a very similar concept. You may have heard of the Capstone Project, or service learning, or project-based learning. All of these structures are very similar to the YPAR structure. The big thing about YPAR is that it's student-led. YPAR provides opportunities for students to choose an issue of unfairness that is relevant to their lives and their communities, do action research around that issue, and come up with solutions that they will pitch to authentic stakeholders in order to create change in their schools and their communities. So at this point in time, I'd like to introduce you to the distinguished UVA faculty with whom our teachers have partnered as they've designed this part of the curriculum. First, I'm introducing you virtually, who you'll see in a moment, to Dr. Jahari Harris. I said this before, but I just want to make sure I give her proper credit. So Dr. Harris is an Assistant Professor of Education at UVA's School of Education, and her specialty, she specializes in racial, ethnic, identity development in adolescents, as well as developmental psychology. Unfortunately, Dr. Harris could not be present with us this evening, but instead, she recorded a video in which she'll share the theoretical rationale behind our approach to the identity and YPAR components of our advisory curriculum. And it's also my pleasure to introduce you to Dr. Nancy Deutsch, Professor of Research, Statistics, and Evaluation and Applied Developmental Science at UVA's School of Education. Dr. Deutsch is also the Director of Youth Next. So I just... She's over there. Among other areas, Dr. Deutsch specializes in identity development among adolescents, and she'll be available to answer any questions you may have about the theoretical or practical underpinnings of our approach. So to set up the video you're about to see, in this video, Dr. Harris will discuss the progression through the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade lessons, focusing specifically on racial, ethnic, identity development. She'll also share the theoretical frameworks briefly that undergird our approach to this work. So I'm going to play this video, if I can get this to work, from Dr. Harris.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jahari Harris, and I am very excited to share some of the developmental science behind the work that we did with middle school teachers who have done such an incredible job of creating these advisory lessons for middle school students. And so, considering time, I'm going to make this brief. So we know that in middle school, two really big things are happening, among other things. One is they're really thinking about who they are in this world and how they relate to those around them. Their identity is really, they're beginning to explore it. And this is actually happening earlier than we previously thought because of things like social media, internet. So it's really important to kind of dovetail all the technology piece. And this is especially meaningful for their racial, ethnic identity, what it means to be a member of their racial, ethnic group. And so I really want to stress, when it comes to race, it's not if kids are thinking about it, it's how they're thinking about it. And it's with that mentality, we want it to create lessons that gave them opportunities to explore positive narratives about their own racial, ethnic identities and other racial, ethnic identities that really push back and push against these single stories we often see. And so, for example, in sixth grade, when we know students are really beginning to explore who they are, they have an opportunity to do autoethnography projects, where they learn about themselves, the eyes of those around them. And from that, they move on to seventh grade, and I should have said in the beginning, the lessons are really scaffolded off of each other. Each one, each grade kind of builds off the next one. In seventh grade, we really tried to focus on expanding that single story and bringing up stories of resistance and agency and joys and community and cultures they might not otherwise be exposed to. And in the eighth grade, for the Youth Participatory Action Research Project, which I'm going to talk about in a second, they're focusing on issues, ways people have been marginalized because of their racial, ethnic identity, and what they can do to create a more inclusive environment. And so that kind of brings me to the next big thing that's happening in middle schools. Their abstract thinking skills are really growing, they're really exploding. And this is coupled with they have much more, much deeper connection with their social networks, and they're expanding outside of their immediate kind of family and peer networks. And in that, they're able to kind of think critically about different... And in that, they're able to kind of think critically about different instances of unfairness they see, and think about what does that mean for them, what can they do differently? And so, in the 6th grade, we're trying to build upon that once more, and so, in 6th grade, they have Journey Boxes where they trace instances of unfairness of present day to what happened in the past, getting kids to really understand that what's happening in this moment isn't often unique to this moment. From 7th grade, that moves into kind of preparing them for this big Youth Participatory Action Research Project of 8th grade, where they're learning research methods, how can they take surveys, how can they do interviews, how can they engage meaningfully in research? That's important to them. And lastly, YPAR, which I've said a bunch of times and yet explained, Youth Participatory Action Research is really just a student, project-based, student-led learning initiative where they're focused on an issue of injustice within their kind of local state or national community. It's very student-driven, and what we've kind of, bringing it back to this identity piece, the parameters are really about what does it mean when people may be treated unfairly because of their racial, ethnic identity, and what can we do to make sure they're treated fairly? And so, in 8th grade, they're really gonna be building a project from the ground up, working collaboratively with peers. We really set this up where students are choosing the project, they want to focus on students for choosing the work, and teachers are more acting as a facilitator because we know they have the cognitive and social skills to do this work in meaningful ways. And so, as you probably heard, that was the timer, and my time is up, but that's a really broad overview of what we compiled and kind of the theory behind it, and I would be happy to speak more about it with you, but I just wanted to kind of touch on the developmental science that undergirds this work.
Hi. All right, so, in terms of how do the identity and YPAR lessons connect to our division's vision, mission, values, and goals? So, there's so much connection to the vision, mission, values, and goals strategic plan of Alamo River County Schools. I'm going to focus on our school division's vision in particular to explain this connection. So, throughout the identity and YPAR lessons, students will be engaging in truly authentic, challenging, and relevant learning experiences that connect to their lives as individuals who hold various identities and to members of their school and local communities. These lessons allow students to gain, to truly gain lifelong learning skills as they come to understand their own identities and others' identities, research issues of unfairness, and take authentic action to create a more fair future. These lessons will truly be preparing students to be contributors and leaders in our dynamic and increasingly diverse society. So, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Jay Thomas, and we'll be available for questions after this.
So, before we take questions, just wanted to share the professional development we've been doing and what we will be doing as well. So, as you saw, Dr. Jahari Harris is absolutely wonderful. She was just such a joy to work with, and our teachers really enjoyed working with her and learning from her as we developed out the lessons and made sure they were developmentally appropriate for our middle school students. So, that happened last year, she was with us all along the way as we met and did curriculum, and then went back to the schools and worked on and brought it back and had her kind of vet that through with us. The developmental designs that we talked about is the building on positive classroom communities, and that is ongoing, that's something that's been in our schools for a while, so we continue to do trainings around that for our new folks that are coming into our middle schools. We have, our middle school principals will be working with all of their teachers on this curriculum. One of the things we've done is each middle school, in addition to the principal, also has a lead teacher that they'll be working with. And so, the group that you see here, the principals and their lead teacher, we'll be meeting once a month to do two things. One, to analyze the lessons from that month, see how they went, make any adjustments we need to make right then or note so that we can make it better or improve it for next year, and also to foreshadow what's coming the next month. We want to be very clear and transparent with our communication, so we'll be working on communications from the school so we could build that common message to send out and let families and students know, hey, this is what we're gonna be working on next month. So, that's the piece that we'll be doing with that, and we'll continue our partnership with UVA. Dr. Nancy Deutsch is here with us, Dr. Joseph Williams from UVA is gonna be leading some professional development with our teachers, I believe that is in November, so we'll continue the partnership with both Jahari and Joe and Nancy as well. So, at this time, if you guys have any questions, we are wide open. I did forget to tell you, right at the beginning of the meeting today, Clay sent an email to all of you, you have a direct link to each individual lesson for all of those lessons for 6th grade, 7th grade, and 8th grade, if you'd like to look through the individual lessons. In addition, those lessons will be on review for families to be able to come in and see as well until we come back to you on the 22nd of September. So, thank you.
Are there any questions for board members or the team?
I always have questions. This is a lovely conceptual framework. I guess I'm questioning, is this going to be embedded across all the courses that are taught in middle school, or is this a separate class period? How does this work?
Yeah, Dr. Akoff, great question. So, this will be part of our advisory, every Wednesday in our schools, all of our schools have a 45-minute advisory. So, we talked earlier about that middle school purpose and vision and common experience, regardless of what school you're at, that's what we've been working with the middle school principals develop out. And one of the things that was developed is a 45-minute period where they can do a lot of the things they've been doing. And on Wednesdays, specifically Wednesdays across the division, this curriculum will be dedicated to that. So, every Wednesday, 45 minutes, the lessons are building here towards that, that'll be
Hi, thanks very much for the presentation. I just have a question about, Ms. Minton, you were talking about authentic work and part of it being positive self-identity and not being the single story. As someone who comes from an educational background where I never saw any role model who looked like me at all, I'm just curious about how we'll be able to integrate that with, or if there's been thought given to that with the staff that we have that's not as representative as we would like for it to be.
Let me make sure I understand your question. So, can you, the last part of it, in terms of giving thought to the staff we have, can you elaborate on that part?
Well, just in terms of like, positive role models who might mirror our students?
Yes.
If it's a part of this at all?
So, through the curriculum, I like, really appreciate your comment about not having seen, thank you for sharing that, not having seen positive role models who look like you, and that's some feedback that we've received from many students, many staff members, et cetera. So, that was a really important component of developing these lessons that do show positive and nuanced and complex narratives of people who have historically been marginalized throughout history and even in the present. So, in terms of staff, every middle school teacher will be teaching, or for the most part, most middle school teachers will have an advisory period or an advisory class. So, the diversity of our staff will be present with our students as they implement these lessons, with our students who also come from very diverse backgrounds as well. I don't know if that answered your whole question, but...
I mean, I guess I'm just, it's sort of an issue that I think we've been dealing with for years, right? Finding staff who are representative of our students.
Okay.
And I just, I wondered what thought had been given to it, ways in which we can show positive role models, given just our makeup.
Say the last part, even in...
Given our makeup.
Yeah. So, all of the lessons, all of the lessons in 6th grade, which 6th grade is focused more on self, so doing autoethnography, auto being self, and then the study of self by interviewing VIPs in their lives, so all of our students who are from various racial, ethnic, and other identity categories and groups and cultures will be learning more about their own identities through that reaction, through that autoethnography research method, and sharing those identity projects with other students in their classes. So, other students will have an opportunity to hear from students who both share some of their identities and don't share some of their identities and social categories. We'll also be focusing on students' individual characteristics, hopes, dreams, values, et cetera, in that autoethnography process. In 7th grade, we have a series of narratives that the teachers put together that I think are very thoughtful, and students will be diving into those narratives where they will learn sort of about the identities and cultures of people who are both similar and different from themselves. They're gonna, I'm excited for you to look at these lessons and be able to see those, but they'll be studying, for example, indigenous hip-hop and what that means for the worldview of indigenous people in the present day, and those narratives really disrupt stereotypes that students may hold about indigenous people. That's just one example. So, they're gonna be looking at a lot of things that are relevant to middle schoolers, we think, and being able to see people in their complexity and see people both in relation to themselves and see people who may be different, and develop that empathy for people in this increasingly diverse society. So, I'm hoping through these narratives, students will see role models for themselves, they'll be able to see themselves in the curriculum, and they provide a window into seeing people who may be different from them. Likewise, students through the Journey Box component in 6th grade, they'll trace an issue of unfairness that may be tied to identity from the past to the present to the future, and in 7th grade, they're gonna practice developing action research skills around topics that are interesting to them and are also tied to identity. And then, of course, in 8th grade, students will have that complete choice to be able to choose a project that's relevant to them, to make the world a better place for everybody, for people who are both similar and different from them. So, maybe that answered more? Okay.
It does, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'd just like to ask, well, first of all, Mr. Todd, the digital citizenship, no, no, I'm not, don't have a question about that, but I just wanted to say that's fabulous.
Sure.
You know, I really think that's gonna be an addition that people will use throughout their lives, and I think you're gonna get a lot of parental support on that.
Thank you, we've been working very hard for a long time to get this implemented, so...
It shows. I like everything about the pathway expectations, I think that is terrific. I have questions about the YPAR, and in the notes on one of the screens, it said that in the 2022-23 school year, that the 6th grade would not be getting either the intro or the, what the 8th grade gets in terms of the YPAR. And by the way, I think Dr. Harris said that it's collaborative working, so it's not each student coming up with their own project, it's teams.
Exactly.
That are involved in that. Why, what's gonna be different in the second year in terms of what the 6th graders aren't getting in the first year?
That's a...
In the 6th grade year and the first school year?
So, that's a great question, so good noticing in the notes there. So, that was just sort of an asterisk on one of our slides, so I'm glad you brought that up. For next year only, 7th and 8th graders, it's 7th and 8th graders who will both be, all be participating in the 7th grade identity and YPAR components of the curriculum. The following year, 8th graders will do the curriculum that we planned for 8th graders in the future, the full YPAR project.
Is it because you need the 7th grade curriculum to do the 8th grade curriculum?
Exactly, yep.
So, the 8th graders you sure didn't have last year's, so they, not ready.
The 7th graders will learn skills like how to do photo voice, how to do a focus group, how to do a survey. It's like action research skills that they need to be equipped with in order to kind of hit the ground running in 8th grade, so we're preparing them for the following year.
And so, the 6th graders then come up, start in the second year with their basics, and then they're prepared to go into the 7th grade for the intro, and then they're prepared to do the full meal deal.
Hey, John, think of it as French 1, French 2, French 3, and the 8th graders didn't have French 2, so they can't take French 3. So...
That's right, yeah, so 6th graders will get the full course, and current 7th graders will be able to participate in the 8th grade curriculum the following year.
I'd love to come to sit in on some of these classes.
That'd be great, and I have a feeling if they choose YPAR projects in the future that involve issues of unfairness or issues of identity in their schools, they'll probably be pitching some of their solutions to you all, so that'd be great. And I'd love, Dr. Deutsch, if she could come up and just elaborate on my answer to you, Ms. Lee?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, no, so I'm happy to talk about, a little bit more about like the identity piece and thinking about the, like, the adults and the role modeling. So, I think one of the things that's really, I think, wonderful about this curriculum is that, you know, we know from research that not just kids, but all of us do better when our whole selves are invited into a space, right? And so, by having this identity exploration as part of it, and as part of the classroom, right, allows the student to know and feel, my whole self is welcome here, and it gives them the opportunity to build a really strong trusting relationship with that adult regardless of whether or not that adult might look like them, or regardless of whether they might have even thought at the beginning that that adult was someone that they would connect with. And so, and also, I will say that there's really thoughtful training being given to all of the staff. So, even though you're right in that the staff who is there does not necessarily reflect the diversity of the student population, the whole point of this is to have everybody learning about both themselves and others, and to build really positive connections also across difference, and to bring in, as Neely said, because kids will also be interviewing and sharing about people in their own lives and networks, it's also expanding the social networks and the visibility of all different role models for all the students because they are getting additional introduction into other people who are in their classmates' lives. So, just wanted to expand on that a little bit.
I appreciate that, I hope that, I'm glad to hear that there's thoughtful PD around it, I just, I'm just gonna push back a little bit because it's possible that people are able to have a role model or connection with someone, but a subset of those people will have a connection with someone who already has a lot in common with them.
Absolutely.
And that is something, I mean, you have to acknowledge that.
Absolutely, and to be really clear, this isn't, I'm a big believer in diversifying the workforce and, you know, and the school personnel, so this is not in lieu of that, absolutely, so, yeah.
A few quick questions. One, great presentation, Mr. Thomas, you did a great job, you did a great job, I love how detailed it is, I loved having access to the lessons and what y'all are anticipating doing, so good job, thank you all. I did a few quick questions. One, community outreach, what availability will the community or parents have? I know we got pushed back in the past about them not knowing what was going on in the school, so will they be able to access this?
Yeah, multiple ways, actually. So, there's a communication, anytime we do curriculum or adopting curriculum, there will be communication, we'll go out tomorrow. So, up on the third floor, we have access on a computer to all the lessons that we actually just shared with you at 6:30 today, so they can come in and click on that. The other thing is, we built out in our Schoology program, the classes and the lessons in there for the teachers. So, if the teachers have activated that, a parent can simply look over their child's shoulder and be able to see the lesson plans that we are proposing, especially for the identity and the YPAR and the Journey Box and stuff. We actually are starting with the digital citizenship piece that we've been doing for several years. So, that's actually what they'll start with for the first seven weeks. So, we won't get into those pieces till we have the public review back on the 22nd. But any, I mean, it's available for them to come view, and then we do anticipate people being able to come in.
I'd almost push back just a little and say, rather than passive availability, if we could do something to just, even if it's just like an email blast, or like a note to teachers saying, make this available so that if, because people want to know what's going on, and if it's all ready and we have access to it, I think a parent should be able to access that and know they can access it.
Absolutely, and that's, I agree, and that's one of the reasons we were talking about with the principals and the teachers, having a monthly, you know, meeting to talk about what went well, what's coming up, because they want to be very transparent and push out communications, hey, guys, here's what's coming up this week. communications, "Hey, guys, here's what's coming up this week." We did talk yesterday, and I'm sorry, Clay, I forget, but in Schoology, it's built in there. If a teacher hasn't clicked on it yet to activate it, they may not have, and then the view we sent you is the easier view for parents to go in and see exactly the lesson and the topic. So, we'll make sure that if anyone has trouble coming down here to see the curriculum, we'll make sure they have easy access to it.
Okay, and then the other one is just because I don't wanna be caught flat-footed again, I just want to kinda understand the basics of what period is this taught in? Who's teaching it? How often are they getting it? What does it look like?
All the middle school teachers will be teaching it, right? That have an advisory, and that's the vast majority of, 99% of the teachers.
Is it a daily thing?
Advisory is a daily 45-minute period in all of our schools. So, during that time, schools do multiple different things, right, under the fundamental developmental design model. On Wednesdays, division-wide, that way it's done on the same day, that they'll have their developmental or they'll have the advisory lessons that we're presenting to you, which will be 45 minutes, so every Wednesday. Now, having said that, a school, Mike, when are you guys doing your start today? But I mean, are your advisories the beginning of the day?
No.
And yours is the?
Beginning.
Right, so Josh from Walton, where they had flexibility is where they put their 45 minutes in their day. Some of them are starting the day with it, some are putting it in the middle, some have it after second period of lunch, so it's kinda spread out throughout the day, but it's a 145-minute chunk that, for the most part, is gonna be in the first half of the day, but it'll be on Wednesdays.
That's helpful.
Does it? Okay.
Yep, that is, and then the-
And I can get you, if you need like a sample of middle school schedule, I can send it to you just so you can see it.
I was just curious, sometimes it's embarrassing to ask the basic ones, but I don't, I didn't know if it was daily or not.
Absolutely.
And then, following up to that, I really appreciated this presentation, I feel like I learned a lot, and I'm kinda curious our tie-in to 9th grade advisory and is there any ability to tie in, like a continuation and are, maybe, I want more information, I guess, about what curriculum we're doing in the 9th grade after seeing this and understanding?
Yeah, with the 9th grade is the freshman seminar, so we actually are five years ahead of this with a seminar piece. So, we've looked at that curriculum as well and kinda tweaking it, so there's a lot of overlays through that, really, the focus is around social emotional learning and transitioning in that 9th grade year. So, there's a lot of overlays with it as well.
Yeah, maybe what, maybe I'll follow up with an email just to you, just 'cause I'm kinda curious about the progress of advisory.
Absolutely.
And what's going on there, 'cause this seems so cohesive and kinda well-thought-out, and I'd kinda like to know how it transitions in.
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
I'm actually curious about freshman advisory as well, or freshman seminar as well, so, and I know that that's sort of an ongoing thing and just to know what progress or where we are with that, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, and as you guys are looking through the lessons, if you have any questions or anything that you think about later, just float me an email, I'll make sure that I either answer it or make sure I get you the answer immediately, so we do appreciate you all taking the time and letting us share this curriculum with you.
I do have one comment or question, maybe from Mr. Todd. I mean, I think it's great, the digital citizenship, and you mentioned a handbook and it's being translated into Spanish. I'm wondering if there could be a more active way to getting that information out to parents because that is an area of concern that a lot of parents have and taking, you know, having some student bring their handbook home in their backpack might not be, might not get the penetration you would like.
Right, so in addition to it being available as the handbook, which I think you all have seen a copy of, actually, we showed it a couple of weeks ago, it is available digitally and we can certainly pursue any strategies for blasting that information.
I'm just wondering, maybe town halls, I mean, I don't know, I mean, what FAQs, I mean, parents do have questions and, you know, flipping through the handbook, it might not be as, I mean, it's a concern that a lot of parents have.
Right.
And about the time that, you know, they're in middle school, if not earlier, but-
So, we are also actually just about to start a little bit of a PR campaign around digital citizenship. We recently were certified as a common sense district, which involves a certain degree of lessons being taught and family resources being sent out. But as part of that certification, we're going to be working with some of our local press folks to push some of this information out more broadly, so hopefully that answers your question, that we've got some stuff in the works.
No, I think that's great, I mean, I think that's pushing the information out, but also permitting some inner exchange with parents in terms of FAQs or something like-
Sure, yeah, so we also have, we haven't set the dates yet, but we will be offering some and have in the past some family nights where families can actually come in virtually and in our schools to ask questions around areas of digital citizenship and just sort of how tech is being used in the buildings.
This may already be in it, but if it's not, I hope it, I hope it gets added to it, something in there about turning it off, because, I mean, that's, part of being a good citizen is-
Right, so that first domain, media balance and well-being, is all about being reflective of when I've had too much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
All right, but based on some of our conversations, Mr. Thomas, maybe you could try to bring us a work session on the 9th grade advisory at some point? I know we have a committee that's in charge of setting up our work sessions. So, okay, so maybe the work session one could be on 9th grade advisory.
We can give you some updates on that, for sure.
Okay, so, thank you, thank Ms. Blunt, Mr. Todd, Ms. Mena, Ms. Woodson, and Dr. Deutsch for your presentation tonight, very informative, thank you so much.
Miles Nelson will be in Ms. Collins, okay, in that order, in some order.
Thank you. Our second part of our work session is on our mental health services. This is a session that you've asked us to present and bring to you, so we're endeavoring to do that. We appreciate the comments. We sent out an email, appreciate the comments you gave us and the questions you ask, and we'll kind of added some slides to address those. So as we go through this one, we're going to do a little more stopping and having you turn and reflect a little bit and see what questions you have, et cetera, as we go through it. So it's a little bit more of a work session than just a presentation.
Dr. Collins, who responded first?
I don't remember.
I did my homework.
I was sick.
Mr. Ober, you did do your homework. Congratulations. So, without further ado, I'll turn the mic over to Miles Nelson. He is our coordinator of mental health services.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here tonight to talk about mental health services. But before I do that, I'd like to introduce two fantastic counselors that agreed to join me tonight. Laura Gaskins at Monticello High School and Brian Everly, who's over at Henley Middle School. I did have to bribe them a little, saying that I would go over the slides first and they'd be more than happy to help answer questions throughout the presentation. With that, so some of the questions and feedback that you gave us, which we're going to address towards the end, so we're going to be going over three sections tonight. We're going to be talking about our tiered services, so how we interject mental health services into the school, and then going to go over kind of some of the roles some of our mental health professionals play within the schools, and then also, we're going to end with some of the data questions that you asked for. So with you, you should have your work session explorations. We're going to be going through, filling out some of the yellow and blue sections tonight. But with that, I wanted to set a frame of reference for us. So it's so interesting that if you ask five individuals for their definition of mental health, you're going to get seven different answers. So with, for us, we use the VDOE definition of mental health. So, mental health is comprised of emotional, psychological, and social well-being, mental health influences, and individual thoughts, feelings, and actions. And I really want to show that in comparison to our ACPS strategic plan for thriving students, and we've heard that a lot tonight. With that, really want to highlight the network of care.
Sorry.
Do y'all not have the sheets?
We're passing papers.
No worries.
We all have one. I think we're good.
Perfect.
I was paying attention.
So, with our first section, we're going to go over quite a bit of information, talking about our tiered services. So, we start off with three tiered services, and I was really excited to come second, talking tonight, because we're, middle school advisory was talking about developmental design. It is our preventative service. All the research shows that getting in connection to one trusted adult in life can be a huge preventative factor for mental health. And so, that's really built into everything within developmental design, and then at the elementary school level, it is responsive classroom. And that is the basis of our preventative services. And so, all of our teachers are able to provide that tier-one service. And then, we kind of move into our tier-two service, where we intersect with our school counselors, our SEL counselors and coaches, and also our student safety coaches. And these are our targeted intervention groups. So, for example, counselors will identify students that maybe grades are lacking, because usually that's a first sign of a student that is struggling with something else. And if you go through and look at anything, when you're looking at signs, warning signs, or at-risk signs of students that are struggling with some type of mental health challenge, they always say change in academics, change in sleep patterns. And so, this is where we start identifying students of where we can provide extra support, reach out to family members, and really try to hone in on how we can help support students and families. And then, lastly, we talk about our tier-three services. So, this is where we connect in with our community partners, such as Health Connect America, our family support workers with Department of Social Services, and Region 10, our student assistant program, I always forget that acronym. They're our staff counselors. They're wonderful. We partner with them quite often. So, with that, I want to pause for a second, and is there anything that you still want to learn about our tiered services, or anything that you found that was new, and that you heard today about our tiered services?
Hi, Miles.
Hello.
I guess my colleagues know I'm very focused on mental, and you do too, that I'm very focused on mental health, but in a broader sense, I'm focused on public health, and I'm wondering how much the mental health professionals at ACPS interact with our school nurses, because mental health is also fundamentally grounded in having, you know, healthy kids. They can see the blackboard. And so, how coordinated is our health response, of which a subset is mental health?
Absolutely. It's a great question. So, in all of our schools, they do what we call team meeting. So, we try not to act within silos. So, one of the easy examples of our team meetings would be our attendance meetings. So, these are generally meetings that are set up where we bring in multiple professionals. So, you bring in a teacher, a nurse, a school counselor, a school psychologist, someone that has relative information, or has a good connection with a student. And so, those meetings are focused around how do you support that child, and how do you get the wraparound services? And I'm going to talk a little bit more about how our school counselors are that cornerstone a little bit later.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Along those lines, I'd like to know more about everybody who is involved in receiving the services, because I understand teachers, I understand students, I understand that there will be teachers, I know that there are other programs, you know, there that come from other sources. But I also would like to know more about how families are, because there are definitely going to be, you know, no.
There could frequently be issues there, too, that we may need to be dealing with or aware of for the effects that it could be having on their children.
Yeah, absolutely. So, if y'all don't mind, I'm going to jump ahead to our next few slides, and I think that's going to address a lot of these questions. So, we're going to jump into our mental health roles. So, first, starting off, talking about school counselors. So, school counselors would be the hub of our network of care. So, talking about how counselors are qualified mental health professionals in schools, who act as an intersection for our SEL counselors, our mental health services. They're the cornerstone in that they're uniquely qualified to support the whole student, and connect them with resources. They need, not only are they able to connect them with resources, but they also have the training to support students. I'd like to highlight that school counselors going through K-Cup credit programs now to be licensed in Virginia, meet the qualifications to be a licensed professional counselor, and they all hold master's degree in school counseling. With that, to answer your question about how they connect with parents and community members, so services, any tier-two service or tier-three service, so connecting with the school counselor, if it is not just a student in crisis or having a challenging day, it will, if it's any type of ongoing service, there will be parent connection, there will be parent contact to agree with service, and also talk about what we can do to support and collaborate and work with the kid. And then, for tier-three services, it's all voluntary. So, if there's ever any type of referral process to a community partner, it isn't something that we can tell students that they have to do. It's always building that partnership with our community partners, and I have a little bit more information about that in our data section. To talk about our SEL counselors and coaches, so, this was a new position added in 2021, and it was a very exciting service, in that it is a differentiated service based on individual school needs. Example, for example, some schools opted for more targeted services, while others opted to have, provide a broad range of services, depending on what was best for their school community. So, in that American Rescue funding, that grant that they are currently under, they were able to hire three positions, a mental health professional, or social worker, a school counselor, or an SEL counselor or coach. And then, lastly, for other roles, there's also my position, which is the coordinator of mental health. So, it has been my position to coordinate all of our mental health services and connect with our mental health community agencies, and partner in those relationships to build more resources for students in our schools. So, give a little bit of time to reflect. If you want to turn and talk for a few minutes, come up with a few questions, and then I'll go over data really quick, and then I think I might answer a few more questions, and then we can have time at the end to go through a lot of, answer any questions that I can for you.
Just explain to me the mechanics of your tier-three and working with Region 10. Region 10, I understand, from my other life, other part of my life, you know, is very short-staffed, and there's issues there. Do we have a contract? How does that work? Are they, yeah, how does it work?
Absolutely. So, they have, as you know, they have multiple services. Right now, we have an MOU with them for our, the staff counselors. So, we have one, we have staff counselors in our three high schools, at Burleigh Middle School and Community Lab, where they are working from the schools directly with students, based on referrals. And then, of course, there's always a referral to their outpatient services, and that's where we're continuing to build more resources for students currently.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. I have questions, but would you like us to have a set time to talk to each other before we ask them?
Yeah, that's all seven-four.
Okay. I can do that.
Do we have to?
Only if you really want to.
I guess, you know, one of the questions I asked about the data, which is, I mean, I want to know, I mean, right when I came on the school board, we had just finished, I guess we were heading, you know, a five-year SAMP sigmarial, and the number of contacts per year was incredible, like hundreds of thousands of contacts. And I don't know, I don't have any sense, I mean, I've talked to counselors, they've been super busy, they've never been busier, in the nature of some of the, there's a lot of suicidal.
All right, going to talk about data for just a few minutes, and then, I appreciate all the conversations we're having, even if they were reluctant. So, yeah, so with our mental health data, so going back to our tier-one services, so a lot of the questions revolved around how do we monitor and show what the state of our mental health is now in all kind of public schools. So, at tier-one service, because it is such a large, broad-range service of all the teachers interacting with students and creating that positive community, that would be our Panorama Climate Survey Data. And so, what I have here for you is our overall perception of social learning environment, and this is where we've really been focusing in building in the middle school advisory, the freshman seminar pieces, to really start to look for how we can start improving our social environment for students. And then, also, with my position being grant-funded, one of the conditions for it, we have started also implementing mental health first aid training for any teacher that would like to take it. So, at this point, I have trained with, in collaboration with Region 10, about 80 staff members, and I'm excited to say that all of K-Tech is trained in mental health first aid, and right now, I'm working with Eileen Gomez to train all the school nurses in mental health first aid.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but
Absolutely.
I don't see it in the slides coming up. What is mental health first aid?
Oh, absolutely. Sorry. I should explain this, shouldn't I? Mental health first aid is, at its very basic, it's a counseling 101 course. So, it is all about noticing behaviors, and how to help any student that is having a mental health challenge. It talks about risk signs, warnings, and then it also goes into not just helping students in a non-crisis situation, but also how to help students in a crisis situation. And it is a course that was developed for everybody. So, it is, if, also outside of school, if you approach a youth that is in crisis, how do you help them? What do you do? What questions do you ask? How do you approach a youth in crisis? And so, it is all those basic skills and creating a common language of mental health, and how do we talk about mental health and help students that are having a mental health challenge?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Who provides that training, for mental health first aid?
That would be me.
I mean, I know Red Cross does, you know, first aid.
Yep.
Are there companies?
So, it's mentalhealthfirstaid.org. It was, it's an international company. It was originally, or originated in Australia, but it is now an international organization, and that's where the curriculum comes from. I offer the training once a month. If you'd like to come join in on the conversation, I'd love to have y'all.
How long does the training take?
Four and a half hours, and two and a half hours of asynchronous work.
I have another question, and it's not a deep dive, so I want to ask it now. Can you explain this chart, because I'm not, your result compared to national, is that supposed to be under the 64%?
Thank you. So, the survey was broken up into six through 12 and three through five. So, the 43% would be for our sixth through 12th graders, and the 64% would be for our third through fifth graders. On average, in talking with Panorama and looking at national data, is a common trend for elementary to be a bit higher than your secondary schools. But like I said, we do have work to do to address our perception of social and learning environments.
So, what is the blue representing? Is that all ages, or is that?
That is six through 12.
Okay.
It's the national, it's their standardization. So, that is where all of the results from...
So, our 43% is compared to that blue, and that 64% is a different age range, that's the elementary?
I apologize. I'm thick. I don't know, 64% of what? I don't understand, I don't understand what this is showing us.
Sure. So, it talks about, I'm drawing a blank now. So, it asks questions, do you have an adult you connect with in school? Do you, this is the overall data for six different questions. All of it is posted at k12albemarle.org with the Panorama data.
Do we want to be 100, or do we want to be zero?
So, this is some metric measuring school climate?
Yes.
And what is a good number versus not a good number?
So, we would want to be in the 70 to 80 percentile.
Okay.
Okay.
That helps. And what is actually FRPL?
If I'm understanding this right, for the blue, if the blue's representing the averages six through 12, that's our, we're at 43%, but that's odd, because it's two percentages. That's actually the 10th percentile. Like, we're doing particularly bad in that age range. But elementary students, we're doing
Better.
Better. But we don't know what the average for elementary students are. They could be like
They're in the 40th percentile.
Okay.
What was that?
The elementary students are in the 40th percentile.
Gotcha.
And what you said, 70 to 80 was?
70 to 80 is where you ideally want to be, because that would be close to the 90th percentile.
I don't know what this is.
So, that's our goal.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to follow up with a clarification email with all this data. Sorry.
Is this from the Gallup poll that was done, or the Gallup study that was?
So, Gallup would be for the employees. Panorama is our student survey.
You're right, you're right, okay.
So, this was given in the fall and spring.
So, this is not anything to clap about?
No, ma'am.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, I would just join in too, and say that the first thing we need to do is get 100% participation by the students. We had abysmal participation at the high school level, very little structure around it. So, we, the first thing we need to do is get accurate data. I feel like this is data, but the Albemarle High School had very few students participate in the survey. Monticello had a very low participation rate. Westerns was also low, it just wasn't as low as the others. So, my first goal as a superintendent is to put data in front of the board that represents most of our students, not just a handful. So, I'm personally looking at this, and I'm not putting a whole lot of stock in it. Other than the fact that if the students aren't motivated to take it, and our staff isn't committed to having the students do it at the school level, that's data in itself for me.
Thank you, Dr. House. So, one thing that I'm particularly excited about is our DESA data. This was the Duverick Student Strength Assessment, and this is our universal screener, which we have also just implemented this year. I would like to highlight, like Dr. House said, that participation rate at the secondary level was fairly low. So, what I have in front of you is our K through eight, where we did have a high percentile of elementary students participate, and this year, we are increasing our training and PD behind it to improve our participation rates. And it has also been looped into our school improvement performance plans to really highlight this data. With that, it is an area of how, I wanted to show you this because it's an area of how we identify students for tier-two services. So, for example, you will see the red section, when students, sorry, let me back up. When students take the universal screener, it's eight questions, it gives you a, one base score between the range of 20 to 70. And if you fall below 40, it says that there's some type of need for instruction. If you're between a 40 and a 60, it's a typical skill. If it's above a 60, you have a strength. With that being said, it is just a universal screener. It's not a perfect system, but it does give us data to check in on with students. So, for example, this is our impact data from when we gave this survey in the fall and spring. And so, between then, between the fall and spring, we had 89 students that were in the need for instruction category. And you can see where it splits into three different categories. So, in that need for instruction category, three students moved to strength, 40 moved to typical, and then 46 stayed within that need for instruction. And so, that gives us a great indication of students that we can check on. So, it asks the question of what is holding the student from moving to a typical range? And so, that's where we start developing our targeted interventions for small So in that need for instruction category, three students moved to strength, 40 moved to typical, and then 46 stayed within that need for instruction. And so that gives us a great indication of students that we can check on. So it asked the question of what is holding the student from moving to a typical range? And so that's where we start developing our targeted interventions for small groups, checking with families and seeing what we can do to support students. And then for our tier three services, this is our SAP counselors with region 10. And so talking about our tier three services, it's a voluntary service, but they're housed within the school. And so this meets a lot of the need that we're talking about community health, that there are a lot of wait lists for counseling services. So out of, in the 21, 22 school year, there were 596 new referrals for students. So out of that, I would like to highlight that 87% participated in services. So a high percentage of kids were willing to engage in services. And then on the right-hand side, you will see where it breaks down the types of services. Kids are anxious. They're feeling anxiety, depression. And then it goes in and talks about all the different areas of where we have, where SAP counselors can support students. Supporting students that need more individualized attention and then also creating small groups as their caseloads fill up. So really quickly, just wanted to highlight that over the past year, past years, wanted to thank the board for continued support for mental health services. In 2018 is when we moved to have one school counselor per school, one full-time school counselor per school. At that time, there were many schools that only had a halftime counselor and all students didn't have access to a school counselor, depending on how many days they were there because they were halftime. That's when they were implemented to be full-time within all schools. 2019, we added in the SAP counselors, which I just showed you the data for, and extra middle school support counselors. And then in 2021, we have added in the student safety coaches. On the bottom, I just wanted to note that the coordinator of mental health and wellness and the SEL counselors are both grant funded and will extinguish at the end of this year. So now we open up to questions.
What does our staffing look like in terms of the need?
So being, just going into year two of my position, that's what I've worked really hard on trying to get a more accurate representation of. So that's where I'm starting to collect more data on our climate surveys. The universal screeners are out, our referrals to outside agencies. These are all pieces that I'm starting to look at in comparison to our staffing. So I don't have a solid answer for you at the moment.
I mean, and I'm, I think all of this is great. But, but I'm also very interested in moving upstream and building resilience in our kids and not waiting until they're tier three.
Absolutely. And I think Jay Thomas did a great job of showing what our tier one preventative services are. That is the intersection of developmental design and responsive classroom and that middle school advisory. So those are the core of our tier one services that, again, building the student identity. The SEL skills through those core classes, it really is that preventative upstream bridge so students don't fall downstream. But the place, but unfortunately due to COVID or not just COVID, but there has been a trend of more students needing mental health services. Thank you, Ms. Collins. And so the counselors have also worked on a guaranteed viable curriculum. So they do support that piece also. So it goes from a direct service, classroom lessons, core, core counseling curriculum from counselors, teaching those skills to middle school advisory to the freshman seminar. Absolutely.
Hi, Laura Gaskins. I'm a school counselor at Monticello High School. If any of you were on the board in 2005, I want to thank you because I was a hire when you decided to reduce caseloads for school counselors. So I got a job at Monticello after being an intern. No counselor left, but a position was created. So thank you if you were on the board then. So an example of moving upstream. So because of the SAP and SEL counselors that we have at Monticello, we have one of each full-time. All of the counselors were able to partner with freshman seminar teachers on an entire unit that they were teaching in their freshman seminars classes. So I was assigned to two freshman seminar teachers. And I went in and partnered with that teacher throughout the entire unit on the lessons that were being taught in regard to career development. I likely would not have been able to commit that time to those school counseling lessons if those two positions were not in place. I feel that we're at a point where we are having to do both. We are having to make up for a lot of lost time with our students and a lot of trauma. So we need those two counselors in place and we also can't stop doing the work for, to build that resiliency with our students. And so right now we're at that crossroads where because of the positions that we have, we're able to do both. And I don't believe that I would have been able to partner with those freshman seminars and build those relationships with those ninth graders in the same capacity had those two positions not in there. So that's just one example, I think, that might speak to what you were saying.
That sounds great. I don't know if this is, I'll stop. But how are we reaching out to our ESOL or, or student, well, ESOL students?
Absolutely.
And how does our culturally responsive teaching curriculum filter down to the counselors? And anyway, two questions, sorry.
Sure. Well, I just became micro credential last school year through CRT. And for my project, what I did was I actually partnered with our lead ESOL teacher to identify the need for a Spanish voicemail system at Monticello High School, which I'm embarrassed to say we didn't have up until that point. So at this point, we have a system set up where parents call, they can leave a message in Spanish. One of our school counselors who speaks Spanish translates those messages and sends an email to the staff member for whom the message was intended. He does not call the family back and that's intentional. I didn't want for him to break down the connection that I would potentially want to be building with a family because I don't speak Spanish as well as I would like. And so when he would send that message to me, he would say, this is who called, this was the phone number. This is what the family person needs. And then I would use Interpretalk to call that family back. And there's also the capacity, if I need to leave a voicemail, I can give directions so that that family can call back and leave a message in Spanish. So I'm not bragging about that. It's, it's, it's not acceptable that it wasn't in place before.
Sounds like you have some bragging rights though.
No, but that would be an example.
Thank you.
I would say too, Laura, you, we benefited from hiring you. I think it's the other way around.
Yeah.
You're a top-notch counselor. But one, one question I have, so I, I think it's, I think would be really, it's really important for the, like the board to understand how programs like responsive classroom and developmental design, we keep saying they build resilience. So I'm just wondering like, what's an example that, you know, when I, years ago I was, I was the liaison, like first, we do, we call them first day of school liaisons, where you go out and visit the schools. And back when I was a director, I, I was liaison with Woodbrook. And I kind of spent the day at the school and they were doing morning meeting, which morning meeting is a part of responsive classroom. And I went in and was in a first grade class, second grade, no, a second grade class. And so they were doing circle time. And these are all things that we hear about, right? Like morning meetings, circle time. Those are all components of responsive classroom. And the morning message is also part of that. When you walk into a school and there's a message posted as you enter that it speaks to all the students that day to let them know it's important that they're there and their presence matters. That all those things work together to create responsive classroom and that there's, you know, I sat in on this and having been a high school person, not really understanding what was going on. The teacher was talking to the students. They're all referred to as friends, you know, good morning friends. We're all glad you're here. And they were talking about different topics. And really got to the point where the teacher asked the students to talk about something they were worried about. And one student mentioned he was worried because he had a baseball game coming up. And he, he heard it was going to rain that, you know, the day of the game and he was really worried about it. And then other students said, I'm really sorry that you're worried about that. And I just picture what life was like when I was an elementary school student. Those kinds of conversations never happened. They certainly weren't fostered by staff at the school. And those, that time for children to interact with each other with a caring adult, build it with the sole purpose of building empathy and understanding for each other has a dramatic impact on the climate of the school and the resilience of the students. Because they see each other as part of their network rather than a competitive environment where, you know, I'm not that concerned about what you're worried about, you know? The, the other thing I would add is that both, both of the programs that we've talked about tonight are, are, were started by employees out in the schools. I know a lot of times at the board level, you might think everything we talk about is a top-down. This is what we do in Albemarle. We're going to make everybody do it. The responsive classroom program came up from the schools, from teachers who had gone off to professional development. They learned about it. They brought it back to their schools, their principals, they, they talked to the principals about it. Individual teachers started to do it in their classrooms. The principals bought into it. Then it comes to the central office. As many of the initiatives that we talk about, we talk about them here, they sound like something we're, we whipped up and we're giving out to everybody to do. But typically the work that happens in this way comes from teachers going out and learning and bringing things back. And that translated into eventually whole schools doing responsive classroom as a school. And then it started coming to the board to provide funding for it because you have, it's costly in the summertime for, for teachers to go to that training. It was the same thing with developmental design. It perked up through teachers at the middle schools. They, they were very concerned about social emotional development of the students. They started learning about it, doing book studies. They brought their principals on board. And now we have, I mean, now you've got all of the middle schools doing the same program. But again, it didn't come from the central office. And I think it's an important point to make. That these, we talk about employee voice, we talk about teacher's voice. These kinds of programs come up from the ranks and that's why I think they're so well embraced by the teachers out, out in the schools. And I'm curious though about the freshman seminar and what is a particular lesson or experience that you think is a resilience building experience? I, I have honestly, I'm, I'm remiss in saying I haven't sat in on a freshman seminar. So I'm curious about what kind of activity might be done and how that builds resilience.
I'm going to defer to Laura on this one.
I'm trying to think back to the unit that I partnered with. I'm remembering one activity where they needed to just simply identify things that they were good at, but then to look back at why are they good at that thing? Is it something that they just innately are good at or did they have to work at it? And then they had to break that down into, okay, so how did you, how do you define being good at that? What is the basis for that? And do you want to get better or is there something that you're not as good at that you'd like to improve on? And then to be able to identify like action steps to do that? And then part of that also was identifying characteristics that they, that, you know, describe yourself. And then they had to go around and find other people who had the similar adjectives. And then to kind of interview each other to ask, well, why do you, you know, why do you think you're good at that? What's an example? So I would say that that would be one example that I can think of.
So self-disclosure?
Right. And in a trusting, vulnerable scenario. I mean, I think that many of us grew up like not, not bragging about yourself, right? It, it wasn't considered something that you were supposed to do.
And in addition, growth mindset, which, you know, we talk about stress among our high school students. When you, when you have the notion that either I'm a math, I can do math or I can't, or I'm an athlete or I'm not, and it's never going to change. The notion that you could have a conversation with your peers in a, in a trusting environment about how did I get good? How, how did I become competent in playing a musical instrument? Well, you know, you practice. But those kinds of conversations, I, I don't know if they've ever happened naturally, just out in the community, among young people, but they're very powerful and important to have. And school is a great place to have it because it's a safe place, it's a safe place to do it. And it can be organized ahead of time, behind the scenes so that it works out well.
And keeping those groups small, I think is key and having it only be ninth graders. And then in theory, the same teacher from ninth grade seminar might follow that same group for 10th, 11th and 12th. So those same seniors who were together now were together as a group, you know, years ago. So you have some of that, you don't have to, you can kind of build on that from year to year and you don't have to start programs.
Thank you.
I have, I guess, just a few questions. I guess we'll just go from the survey. I would like, if you're saying don't take much stock in it, I thought we put some emphasis though on this. It's a student climate survey. I thought we'd put some emphasis on that. So I guess I would push in this session to make sure that we get accurate results because saying that we're faring at the 10, 10% compared to the, that's concerning, especially if we're putting so much effort. So hopefully next year we can have better data on that.
Yeah. So one thing I'd like to save with that piece is it has been incorporated into both of our school improvement plans. So the DESA and the panorama survey is much more looked at and I think it's going to be, I think our data is going to be much better this year.
Okay. The next thing is, I guess, from a, one piece of information I would like after this is a better understanding of what is in place at our schools. In the past few years, we've added positions, we have grant-funded positions, we have one time. So I guess I am just curious, I don't know, do we have a social worker at every school? Is that a dual role that's filled by another position?
So currently there are two school social workers. There's one at Albemarle and Monticello. And then there is a funding through Department of Social Services where it's not through all kind of public schools, but it is the family support program through DSS. They have eight workers, so they're placed in five schools and they have a floater for other schools. And so I work collaboratively, collaboratively with them to place referrals with schools and DSS for those, for that program.
So I guess one thing I would ask from you as a deliverable, I guess, is like a one-page sheet that says, here's the staff that we have assigned. Not their name, but here's what we have at each school in place that's dealing with these various things.
Certainly.
Just so I better understand it. And then the last piece was, I guess, one of the points of the work session for me is kind of tying it into our budget. And I, I like where I think we put emphasis, which is preventing mental health crisis. I don't think we're ever going to be a main provider of like tier three services. That's not our role. So what I guess I would say is where I would like to see emphasis is the mental health first aid. You know, in our little group, we talked about just having people, understanding when a mental health crisis is occurring so that we can move them to whatever appropriate service they need is important. So 80, I would like to see more. Personally, I would like to see more teachers. I don't know what that training looks like, but getting a lesson and like, how do you identify a mental health crisis? And what are the steps you need to take if you notice these signs? What are the signs? So that would be an important one for me, Matt, I guess, moving forward. And then I feel like I had more written, but oh, this is just a random one, but I did talk, I actually talked to a high school counselor today. And in the budget, I guess, do we need, are, do we, are we interested in continuing these same positions? I guess I would want some feedback on that. And do we need more? Because something I've always struggled with is a guidance counselor versus like an emotional counselor. I think that's a tough role to do. I actually talked to someone who had split from elementary where she was doing a lot of SEL teaching. That's another resiliency piece. We have the SEL teaching. Now we're doing the middle school advisory. Then we have the, and then, you know, in high school, it's a lot of scheduling, making sure that kids can graduate. It's not really. So I'm just curious, do we need more positions or what's your like recommendation for us to think about as we move forward? Especially because I don't know budget, on the budget section, I, I'm assuming we're going to have an increased cost next year because we're not going to have funding for some of these. Some of it came externally.
So I'd be more than happy to follow up with that, with the one pager of all the different positions that we're offering.
Yeah, I think almost what I'm, what I'm kind of envisioning is almost like an org chart, like a grid. chart, like a grid that had numbers, but also ratios, like what, what does that translate into in terms of ratio of counselor to students? And while, you know, this is great because this is like, I know I see you a lot, Miles, but it's great to be able to ask you a few questions. One is with the mental health first aid, I've heard, I mean, I have heard that it's the, the students that do it feel like they really benefit from it. I haven't heard much, I haven't heard a whole lot about the teacher's experience, but what kind of feedback do you get on that?
So it's, it's a fun course. I do enjoy it. It is long. It's four and a half hours. The only time it has really been offered has been either after school. I've offered it during the summer. I did not push it beyond volunteering, putting it out in the compass due to teacher burden. I hear all stressed out, teachers are all the time. And so I had, didn't advertise it as much as I wanted because I was getting anywhere between five to 15 people signing up. So I have to have about a minimum of five people sign up for me to run the course per their structure of it. And so with that, I was going to start pushing out more. I'm going to be hosting a once a month course for it, for anybody that would like to volunteer and take it. Still looking at different ideas and then recruiting other trainers for it. So anyone can train, anyone can get trained in the course who has had a lived experience. So it doesn't have to be a mental health provider providing this course. And it's actually more impactful sometimes when it's someone who has had a lived experience versus someone who is a mental health professional. So continuing to look at that structure piece. As for the student participation portion, I'm currently partnering, still in talks with Region 10. So I partner with their prevention specialists quite often. They actually come and teach the course to me quite often because you're only allowed to teach the course for one person to every 15 participants. And so with their trainer, we get 30 participants so we can get larger courses. And with that, everyone's been very thankful. I have to say some of my favorite people to interact with that course is our office associates. Out of everyone that's taken the course, they are some of the most appreciative people and they are some of the people that interact with almost everybody. It's a very valuable course. And with that, the student portion actually can't be taught for schools. They have the teen mental health first aid course, but it is only available after 10% of staff has been trained. So it's not something that we're able to offer yet, but I hope to offer it soon.
So yeah, I would just say personally, that sounds really interesting. And I guess I would like to see some proposals around that weather. I mean, just hearing you talk, I could think shortening Bernard Hairston style, like developing kind of a shortened version that we can at least implement out. Or we could do stipend or some very small amount. Like if you do the course, you get, you know, a hundred dollars for your time if you're, I'm sorry, but I don't know what that adds up to, but I don't know. I envision that, I personally would be interested in just making sure that people working with us are trained in identifying the signs of not, of students that are in crisis. The other thing that comes to mind is attendance, you know, like if the student is missing a bunch of school, like just making sure that people are able to call that out.
Yeah. In, in that, I'm curious to know why K-Tech has such a high rate? I mean, that's awesome. I support that.
It was driven by their director, Stephanie Carter. She wanted the staff trained. And so we did that during their pre-service week as one of their training days.
Okay. Great.
Sort of a comment directed at Matt. But I know that in terms of overall staffing for mental health, one thing I've been concerned about is, I don't know what the situation at Greer is this year, but I know that Steve Sanders has used his differentiated staffing funding to fund social workers or mental health counselors. And I really think that that should be pulled out and be, this is a mental health staffing and that the differentiated staffing that goes to schools based on need really focused on instruction. I mean, I know you need to have good mental health to have instruction, but I, I always cringe when he tells me that's how he's funding extra support. Anyway. Do our, I know our school safety officer program is very new. I wonder if there would be a benefit of mental health first aid training offered there as well? That's just a question. I don't know the answer.
They, they're all trained.
Oh. It was a fabulous idea, even though I didn't.
Very efficient.
Okay, I have a question. If, if a student is exhibiting extremely aggressive behavior, is there any connection that you would have with that student automatically that would refer them to Region 10 or to some other type of service? Does that question make any sense?
So are you talking about like if a student is in crisis? Yeah. So yes, we have a process. And if a student is in crisis, we would connect with the family. We have our threat assessment process. And we also have guidance documents for suicidal ideation and self-harm. And if they are at risk of harming themselves or someone else, then we have our processes to refer to either Region 10 or to the emergency room.
Okay. And that would occur automatically?
It would go through the threat assessment team. So that is a collaboration of individuals like our school counselors, our school psychologists. It would be a partnership between them and then administrators to make sure that the kid is safe. The best outcome is to, if the kid, if the child already has services, to connect them with their outpatient counselor and de-escalate as possible. So first we would try to de-escalate. Referring a kid to Region 10 or the emergency room would be our last, last possible option or choice. It's not something that would generally be the best benefit of this child unless they are seriously at risk of harming themselves or someone else. So that would hopefully be our last option before we collaborate with other community partners and getting the students some help.
Okay. Thanks.
So in response to like the freshman seminar and like responsive classroom, is there anything that's been implemented to kind of carry that on throughout sophomore, junior, senior year? Because as for me, I'm in Avid and Avid was kind of like my freshman seminar class. I've been able to stick the same people without, for years. And that's personally helped me a lot. But I know that a lot of other students haven't been able to reconnect with those students that they met in freshman seminar. So I feel like, is there anything that we could do to kind of help that out?
It's a great question. I'll have to get back to you.
Okay. And my second question is, or less of a question, more of a comment, but at Albemarle High School, I understand that we do have like a mental health counselor. But we, I don't think as many, we have so many students, I don't know, maybe like 2,000 or so. There's just so many students, I don't believe that, that many of them are aware that we do have such a mental health counselor. So I feel like there's any chance just to kind of get a counselor, just to go around to each classroom as much as they can, every homeroom, just kind of introduce themselves and make sure that they're out there. That would be great.
Hi, I'm Brian Everly. I'm at Henley Middle School. I can't speak specifically to the high schools, but I will speak at some of the interventions we do at the middle school level. And I will say we are beginning, this is day two. But next week, we are going to be going into our language arts classes and we're targeting our sixth graders. And we're going to have each of them, we have four counselors, or really three and a half positions at Henley Middle School. We're really fortunate in that, but we do individual meet and greets where we bring the kids in in groups of three to four and we have them in our office. We explain our processes of how to see us, how to meet us, where we are, how to find us. Henley's a big school. Albemarle's bigger, right? And just saying, you know, our office is here doesn't mean anything. You actually need to be in a space to actually have it feel safe and welcoming. And it's not enough to just theoretically know that these people are in your building. You actually need to be shown how to access them. And so these are ongoing conversations. I know at our middle school level, at our PLC level, and I know from our work with my high school counterparts, I know this is something that we're constantly thinking about. How do we increase the efficacy of that pipeline? Having kids actually feel safe. It's not enough to just say that. We actually need to model that and show that. So thank you for that question.
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much.
And at the high school level, I'll say, this is really all levels, but word of mouth is so important. And I always say that as a school counselor, if your job isn't getting easier each year, then you might be doing something, you know, you might have some things to work on because word gets out to your community of students and they say, she helped me, she was useful. And then they do self-referrals. So I was talking to our SEL and I asked her, I was like, how, you know, how do most of your referrals come in? They started with the nurse when she was first hired. Because you know that when you go to the nurse and you have a stomach ache, it usually or sometimes doesn't have anything to do with your stomach. It's what's going on up here. So it started with the nurse and then it was a lot of school counselors. And at this point, we've been lucky to have her for two years. This is her second year. At this point, it's self-referrals and referring each other with friends. So that, she said that at this point, that's the majority of her referrals.
And just kind of piggybacking on how we use the referral system, that also continues on to the SEL roles as well, because this is a relatively new role. A big part of what I'm also doing as a school counselor is teaching our students how to utilize these different roles within our building, how to model that, how to make those bridges and those connections, just like I'm bridging between the nurse or the OAs or any of the other stakeholders within our building, back to the different services that we have available, both within our building, but also within our community. Because there are a lot of things that our kids have interest in or need of that aren't just housed in our buildings. Like we want to provide a whole kind of person's service. So, yeah.
I didn't get, catch your name. What was your name?
Hi, I'm Brian Everly at Henley Middle School.
Okay, Ms. Everly. Right.
One thing I will say about this data, I know that, you know, some of it is incomplete. It's always incomplete. I mean, that's data. But it is all just a snapshot in time. And so I just don't have any sense, I mean, I hear what people say and I read articles about, you know, mental health difficulties, especially due to all the global trauma of a pandemic. But I just want to get us, any sense that you can give me about how that's shaping up in our schools? If there are a lot more referrals? And I know that's not data that we have here, but just anything you can do to give me a sense of how it is going now?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's one thing that I hope to present or more, again, going into, this is now my second year. So I started the process of collecting the SAP referrals, starting to collect all those pieces and trying to get a better picture of that. So I would be more than happy to follow up on that.
I've been thinking in some ways it'd be hard to set goals, you know, because there are just so many different things going on and evolving. And when you're talking about people and, and mental health, it's harder to really quantify in so many ways. And so I admire you all for the work that you do and for everybody who's engaged in this whole process. And we'd love to know on an ongoing basis what the needs are. Maybe not all the wants, but the need, the need needs.
Thank you.
I too. I just want to offer a quick anecdote because it's kind of funny and it goes, speaks to the work that you guys are doing. So last year, my son, within the first month of school, he was having a little rough, a rough time with transition. And so I got this email from the school counselor saying, you know, Ben, sorry, my son. And he wouldn't mind me sharing this, you're going to find out. So I got an email saying, he came in, he was really upset and, you know, I just wanted to share, he wanted me to share with you that, you know, he's very upset that y'all, your dog had died. And I was like, okay. So he came home and I was like, I heard you were sad. I really appreciated the email and that you guys were communicating with me. Let's talk it through. He's like, yes, yes, yes. Next day, another email. He came in, he's really sad today. He realized he never got to meet his great, great grandpa. He's having a tough time. So he came home and I'm like, you know, I heard you had a rough day. Let's talk through it. And he's like, but before, and then, so the next day, there was another email. And he came home, he said, so did you get my message? And I was like, it's like, yeah, I did get an email. He's like, I'll send you another one tomorrow.
You need to, you need to say how old your son is.
13. No, I'm joking. No, he was six. And so he quickly realized that you guys were so responsive that if he wanted to communicate with me, he just needed to go down to the office and I would get an email telling me all his thoughts and that he missed me, that he was sad about this, you know? So you guys did a fantastic job. But I did tell him after that, maybe, you know, dial it back. You can just talk to me when you get home.
That's too funny.
Are there other questions from board members?
Just, I guess, for Brian Everly, who was walking around the classrooms and introducing himself. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned also mental, we always hear about mental health stigma. But at, at one end, we're seeing a lot more contacts, a lot more counselor visits. But is stigma still an impediment? And as you're introducing yourself to the different classrooms, help break that down?
Yeah, it's 100% impediment. And that's absolutely why we go about this the way we did. This was actually something I inherited from my colleagues when I first started at Henley seven years ago. It was actually the brainchild of one of our language arts teachers years ago. But essentially, it is for that exact same purpose. It is to normalize the process of using people within the building. And one of the things that our county is doing an amazing job at is creating contact for all of our students with some trusted adult. And one of the things I'll tell all of my families and all of my students, it doesn't need to be a person with a role of counselor. My role is to be a bridge. My role is to be an educator. My role is to be a connector. And if a student makes a connection with some other teacher, it doesn't need to be me. But we are normalizing the process of making a connection to some trusted adult. And we do that by doing this in groups and batches. And so it's not this idea of, oh, one person's coming to the counselor. It's this idea of, oh, we're all going through this process. All of the sixth graders are going to be going to see the counselors, right? And this is something that we had incredible success with, you know, in the years that I've been working at Henley. Unfortunately, we didn't do that in the last couple of years because of all sorts of other circumstances. And so we were super excited to know that we were going to be able to hit the ground running and really make those inroads with this current group.
That can have lifelong consequences.
Yeah.
Too. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Ms. Gaskins. And Ms. Nafferty, Mr. Nafferty. Thank you all three for coming. Very informative session.
Thank you, Miles.
Thank you.
Do we have other business by board members or the superintendent?
No other business, except I visited and walked the site of the Boys and Girls Club, which is extraordinary. And if you contact James Pierce, you can get a hard hat and walk through the project too. It's going to be amazing. It's 50,000 square feet and it will be opening in February. Supply chain issues.
All right. On the first day, I did visit Red Hill, Walton, and Scottsville. And I think, any of other board members visited any place on the first day?
I didn't do it on the first day, but I went to a professional development thing in Mountain View with Dr. Williams, helping teachers learn to talk about race. It was very good.
I didn't visit any schools besides Agnor Heard I was working that day, but I do want to call out Dr. Haas. Thank you for all the texts. You must have had a busy day.
Yeah. That's fun.
I didn't go on the first day either, but I've got five or six schools lined up for next week. And so I'm looking forward to that. One thing that was outrageously fun was last Saturday down at the Ting Pavilion with the giveaway of school supplies and, boy, I'll tell you, the Henley group was really, really a lot of fun. That was in the convocation. But, but we gave away 1,300 backpacks in 20 minutes. It was expected to go for two hours and we were done in 20 minutes. It was amazing. But, you know, it made a difference in a lot of, of people's lives. But, you know, it made a difference in a lot of, of people's lives, and it was just great, and it was heartwarming to do.
I do have one, just sort of unrelated, off-the-cuff comment, which is always dangerous for me. I feel like tonight, I feel very aware of the number of extremely high priorities that we have that have come up today, transportation, huge, staff, policy, health, leave, huge, mental health, obviously, enormous, you know, and we haven't even, those are just several big things that we touched on tonight, we're gonna continue to touch on them, and, I don't know, I just, I feel aware of the weight of this position, aware of the weight of the work that's done in the schools, and I just wanted to give name to that, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Lee.
Well, I would, I mean, just, we, I would speak for all the staff that are here, I mean, the school board is tremendously supportive of the work, and the resources that you provide us, and how you prioritize it, the listening that you do, it really means a lot, and your leadership keeps the school system moving forward. Thank you. I mean, days, days like yesterday happen because we have a board that supports the work.
I just want to know, Dr. Haas, if you paid your ticket to Mr. Irani?
Yeah, so I go out, I parked over in the bus area, and Mike Irani wrote a ticket and put it on my windshield, and it said, I owe, I have to pay $100. I'm gonna frame it, because it made me laugh out loud all the way to Woodbrook, but he is such a smart alec.
I talked to him today, he said you deserved it.
Yeah. He's, it's not over, though, so.
I will say, convocation was great, I guess we haven't met since then, and I dress like a pinata, so whoever does it next year, I'm happy to pass along the costume.
I don't, I don't dress up like things, I think that's inappropriate.
For those who don't know the reference, he was a chicken before, I've heard, I've never seen it.
You've never seen the picture?
It's on the front page of the Daily Progress. I've got pictures in my phone.
Okay, so thank you to our board members, our staff, all of our presenters for tonight, our student rep, Ms. Almond for being on the board, Ms. Almond. So thank you, and hearing no other business, our meeting is adjourned.